Welcome to the
Thank you.
May 9th Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today, we are being assisted by our FFA clubs from Lower Lake and Kelseyville. So they're going to be helping us out. It's very exciting. Before we do our pledge, we do a moment of silence. And the moment of silence is to honor, you know, difficult things that have happened this last week. And we, we lost quite a few really significant people this weekend. I know I have a couple from my district, but I'm wondering if the other supervisors have them too. Supervisor Simon does too. Would you like to go for first?
I'd like to offer this moment in dedication of silence for Sharon Dawson. Sharon Dawson was an artist, a photographer, and you know, going to miss greatly by her family and the Middletown community.
And then in District 5, we lost Anna Ravenwood, who was a member of our Lake County Board of Education. And she was, she lived in Harrington Flat. I often saw her riding her horse. She had a profound impact on our community. And as did Carl Parker. He passed away last week. He had brain cancer. He worked with Lake Transit for a long time and then lost his house in the valley fire and became really active as a volunteer in long-term recovery. That's how I met him. And the cleanup of the Hoberg's Resort after the fire was something that was a big challenge. And staff here at the county really relied on that volunteer help. And he and I also served together during the Clayton Fire with the Red Cross as event-based volunteers. So as we stand, we're going to do our moment of silence and then we'll do a pledge after that, okay? So our chair for the morning, Ally Bexstedt, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sam, before we get started and maybe lose track of time, would you mind taking a picture of all the kids up here with us? Yay. Thank you, Sam. What's the verification of legal notice? Is that, and do I miss that every time? Item 3?
Item 3 is pledge allegiance. I don't know what you're talking about.
Am I looking? Oh my gosh, I'm looking at the planning commission. I have the wrong agenda. All right.
It starts the same.
Okay. So this is our list of the agendas for the year. And then we can pull it up here and see what we're working on today. I had my agendas mixed up. Okay. So item 4 is a consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. So if there's an emergency or something comes up and we have to take action before our next meeting, sometimes these items will come into us. So do we have any extra items?
I have no extra items today.
Okay, thank you. Then we want to approve the consent agenda. And if you look at all of our 5.1 through 5 point, there's a lot of them today. 5.23. So these are items that are supposed to be non-controversial and we can just pass them all in one motion rather than doing 23 items individually. So do we have any items from the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? And it looks like I've got 5.2, 5.11, 5.15, 5.17, and 5.18. Is there anything beyond those? From the board? No. What about from the public? Anyone in the public? Joan, do you wish to pull an item? 5.23. Can you come up to the microphone, please, for the record and state your name?
Joan Moss.
And which item did you like, would you like to pull? You just restate it, please.
5.23.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for action.
Our sophisticated system of getting called on.
Yes.
Madam Chair, which ones are being pulled for discussion and which ones are being pulled for following agendas?
5.15 and 5.18 are pulled for next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
And the public, did you ask the public for any pulling?
Yes, Joan is pulling 5.23.
Okay, sorry about that. Madam Chair, move to approve all consent agendas except for item 5.2, 5.11, 5.15, 5.18, 5.17, and 5.23.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So then we've approved all of these items on the consent agenda that didn't get pulled for later. Then we're going to come to our timed items. And the six items are all timed. So we have to pay attention to the clock here. So our first item, 6.1, what does that say? You guys speak into the microphone.
Public input?
So during public input, anyone from the public can speak for three minutes. And they state their name and they can come to the microphone or they can do it via Zoom. And we have a form here from someone that wants to speak. So this is Joan Moss. Joan, do you want to come up to the microphone? And then you can state your name, have three minutes, and they can speak about anything they'd like. But because it's not on the agenda, we can't have a dialogue about it. So then I set my timer. As soon as she starts speaking, we set the timer and she's got the whole three minutes.
Thank you. Joan Moss. While I commend Lake County Supervisors Green and Crandall for their continuing proclamation regarding the hitch in Clear Lake, I continue to question the EPA regarding the lack of the name hitch on EPA's advisory about which fish to avoid eating in Clear Lake. These are free on the third floor. When the EPA mentions cyanobacteria and blue-green algae that may contain mercury, but do not mention methylmercury. Also, I have mentioned this again and again to Sarah Ryan and Gavin Pauley, but apparently the policy still remains. One other comment about the mortality of trees. That's one of Jessica's pet projects. I really respect her. Why is there not a tree planting project? Part of the project for every tree removed, add a new baby tree. There are Girl Scouts in Kelseyville that have planted oak trees. They picked up the nuts, they grew them, and now they're planting them on Cobb Mountain. That can happen. And it's being done by children, Girl Scouts in Kelseyville. I have this, this kind of proves my point. This is the advisory.
They mentioned every fish but hitch as existing. And that is the.
Thank you. And this is what I said today here. Excuse me. This, the hitch are in Clear Lake and they should be mentioned. And this is the state advisory that's put out by Gavin Pauley from the EPA. And we hear from the EPA periodically about they're, they're removing the dangerous mercury. But they don't ever, they used to say methylmercury, but they don't anymore. And I don't believe the mercury has, the methylmercury has disappeared. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who is here for public input? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. So we will close public input and we will go on to item 6.2. We want to read, so we have to read each item.
Pet of the week?
Our 9:07 a.m. item. So here we have Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. I am Officer Sadie Egan with Lake County Animal Care and Control.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone? You can pick it up if you'd like. There you go.
Good morning. I am Officer Sadie Egan with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With us today, we have Officer Dan Gard and Ricky. Ricky is a one-and-a-half-year-old Anatolian Shepherd. He has a cool backstory. He has been with us for 30 days on quarantine due to the fact he got in a fight with a raccoon. Ricky is available for adoption now and we have 44 other pets available for adoption as well. We are located at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Our number is 2630278. If you would like to come see our adoptable pets. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you, Ricky. Good luck.
Yeah, make friends with the raccoons. Okay. So if we look at our time and we look at our next item, can we proceed? Okay, so what's the next item?
New and noteworthy at the library.
So our 6.3, 9:08 item. And see on Zoom, we have our, the director of our library system, Christopher Veach. Go ahead, Christopher.
Thank you. I am Christopher Veach, the county librarian. And thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. Last week, you proclaimed wildfire preparedness week. So I'm a little late with this recommendation. But the library has multiple materials for wildfire preparedness that we purchased with a grant from the state. And one of them is the Fire Smart Home Handbook, Preparing for and Surviving the Threat of Wildfire by Kot Clyde Soles. And I'm recommending this book because it's a very detailed, but also very practical guide for the average homeowner on things they can do for very little money to protect their home and their family from wildfire. And it covers everything in just 288 pages, from how to prepare your landscaping at home, how and when to evacuate, and even what to do if you do end up directly in the path of a wildfire. And it also covers after there's a fire near your home or at your home, how to recover, deal with insurance, and restore your land. It also talks about wildfires, how they start, and describes how they behave. And there's a lot of information out there, but this book really has very in-depth information gathered all in one place in an easy-to-read format. And I find learning more about wildfires and how you can prepare can really help you feel more confident about what can be a very scary topic. So this book, Fire Smart Home Handbook by Clyde Soles and more, is available at the library in print or as an ebook, which can be viewed for free on your phone, tablet, or computer with your library card. And a little bit, changing gears to a little bit something more fun, also this week at the library, I invite everyone to join us for Family Game Night at the Red Bud Library. This is going to be the second Wednesday of every month. So this Wednesday, it's Wednesday, May 10th at 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And you can join us for an evening of fun and games. We have board games, card games, and even giant games. We have a giant Connect Four that's almost as tall as a child. So all ages are welcome. You can play with our games or feel free to bring your own from home. And we invite, you know, people to come as a family or they can challenge some new people, new friends to a game at the library. So if you need more information about that, you can give us a call directly at the Red Bud Library at 707-994-5115. And you can learn more about the events and services available at the library at our website at library.lakcountyc.gov. Or of course, come visit us at your local library branch in Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, or Upper Lake. So thanks for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library. And I hope to come back in the future to keep everyone updated on what's new at the library.
Thank you for that update. Does anyone here have a library card? All right. So after we have a presentation, we open it up for the board to ask questions or make comments. So anyone from the board have a question or a comment about this item? No? Okay, so then we'll turn it over to the public. Oh, you do? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to Christopher. I think this is the first time that you've done this on our agenda. Looking forward to the next. It's always good to know what's going on in our libraries because our libraries is so much more than just books for people to read. There's a lot of activities going on, so appreciate it. Looking forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone from the public? And this is the same as public input. If anyone wanted to come up, they would have three minutes to make a comment or ask a question or have a bit of a conversation. Anyone in the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. So then we will close this item. What's our next item?
Presentation of Proclamation Designing the Month of May 2023 as Military Appreciation Month.
Great. So for our 6.4 item, we do have one of our members from, it's Stephen, is going to be presenting. And Supervisor Crandall, would you like to assist?
Yes, I will. Would you like to come up? Any veterans that want to come up as well? Chris, you got to come up and sing "Ankers Away."
First of all, hello, everybody. I'm Stephen Frace. I'm the president of Kelseyville FFA chapter. And proclamation designating the month of May 2023 as Military Appreciation Month. Whereas, the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are the direct results of the sacrifice and continued vigilance by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that enrich this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas, in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who have given their lives in defense of freedom and to the honor, and to honor the men and women of our armed services who have served and continue to serve our country. And whereas, the months of May and June were selected for this display of patriotism because during these months, we celebrate victory in Europe, VE Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, and Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, and Flag Day. And whereas, the months of May and June are an opportunity to acknowledge and salute the families of those called away to duty. And whereas, the Lake County, and whereas, Lake County is the place many veterans, close to one out of every 12 residents proudly call home. And whereas, the Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the courage and sacrifice of all veterans and active-duty military personnel in our communities and throughout our nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 2023 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County and calls upon all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for our military personnel by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons passed and adopted this ninth day of May 2023.
So I just wanted to take a minute to notice these two young gentlemen. They're both enlisted, Army and Navy, right? Or vice versa, sorry. Yeah, so just wanted to note that so that people know that these young men are doing their, they're going to be going into the military. So thank you for that. All right, well, thank you. And if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak? And if not?
Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room that would like to give public comments on this?
Sorry. No hands.
Okay, everyone just look at Sam and smile. Hey, thank you so much. It's our next item. Check the time. We're good?
Yep.
Okay, let's, so you want to read this and then the time?
Thank you, Rick.
And everything here.
Okay. 6:5910 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Designing the Month of May 2023 as CalFresh Awareness Month.
See, do you want to do this one? He's got it down here.
Hello, I'm Samuel Van Oven, Sentinel for the Kelseyville FFA chapter. Proclamation Designating the Month of May 2023 as CalFresh Awareness Month. Whereas, CalFresh is a monthly benefit for food purchases that helps low-income residents gain access to healthy foods and participation can play a crucial role in improving the health and status of vulnerable populations. And whereas, every $1 in CalFresh generates $1.79 in local economic activity. And whereas, 16,507 individuals in Lake County are currently receiving CalFresh benefits totaling 4.7 million per month. 50.1 million in benefits over the course of the last year. And whereas, the County of Lake Department of Social Services recognizes the need to reduce hunger by increasing access to and participation in food assistance benefits, particularly for elderly, disabled, families, and children, and is committed to an outreach and public awareness campaign that promotes equity and inclusion in access and to increasing awareness of potentially eligible Lake County residents about the benefits of CalFresh. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of May 2023 as CalFresh Awareness Month, passed and adopted this ninth day of May 2023.
So I'd just like to take a minute to acknowledge our crew here today. They are our outreach staff. Our supervisor here, Louisa. Jennifer in Azure are our outreach eligibility specialists. You can find us throughout the community, throughout the month of May. And in the future, our next event will be Saturday at the Mental Health Matters Event here in Library Park. If you're interested in applying for CalFresh benefits or learning more about the program in general, come on by and CS.
And your name for the reference?
Rachel Dillman. I am the Deputy Director for Eligibility and Employment Services.
Thank you.
I'm not going to let you go that easy. I have some questions. I think this is important to have today. There's a lot of changes that are occurring right now with CalFresh. I want to make sure to mention what those changes are and also how you can utilize your CalFresh benefits over at our farmers markets and how that works.
Sure. Yeah, so the, the changes that are mentioned is that March was the last month of public health emergency, emergency allotments and CalFresh benefits. Our customers saw those issuances in April. So starting in May, our customers are receiving less per month because the special benefits the federal government authorized to give more cash have ended with the public health emergency related to COVID-19 ending. So all of our recipients should be aware of those changes by now. If you are concerned that your benefits are not correct, please reach out to us and we'll help make sure you are getting the maximum allotment available to you. And then, farmers markets, yes. Farmers markets, we're also at farmers markets periodically throughout the month. And there is a market match program to help you make your CalFresh benefits go further. It can usually double your purchasing power. You want to check in and see the farmer's market host to learn more about how that farmer's market is operating the program and how you can use your benefits to buy fresh local veggies.
Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone from the public or in the chambers that would like to speak on this item, public input?
Oh.
Do you have anyone in Zoom?
Don't see any hands.
Okay. Do you want to just stay there? Your buddy here has the next one. Okay. Yes, 6.6.
6.6, 9:11 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Designing the Week of May 7, May 7 through 13, 2023, as Correctional Officer Week in Lake County, California.
Good morning. My name is Yvette Ortega and I am the Lower Lake FFA President. Proclamation Designating the Week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Deputy Sheriff Correctional Officers Week. Whereas, the operation of correctional and detention facilities housing millions of prisoners and detainees throughout the nation represents a crucial component of our criminal justice system. And whereas, no public servant has more difficult or less publicly visible job than the men and women who ensure the safety, containment, and control of human beings charged to their care while sustaining uncompromised regard for their dignity and constitutional rights. And whereas, correctional personnel must retain constantly vigilant in terms of their own safety, as well as protecting inmates from the violence of other prisoners and, at times, from inflicting harm on themselves. And whereas, correctional personnel are charged with protecting the rights of the public and safeguarding the public from the criminals in their custody, while at the same time encouraging such prisoners to develop skills and attitudes that help them become productive members of society after their release. And whereas, correctional personnel work under demanding circumstances and face the danger in their daily work lives, often sacrificing personal and family time to provide a necessary but often thankless and unrecognizable service to the public. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Lake County, designees the Week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Correctional Officers Week in the Lake County, and encourages all citizens of Lake County to join in recognizing the commitment of all custody staff who maintain the safety and security of our correctional and detention facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Lake County Sheriff Rob Howe. I'd like to thank the board for this proclamation and the FFA for the beautiful readings this morning. Appreciate it. This is National Correctional Officers Week. So a little thank you to all of our COs nationwide, but of course, in particular, our Deputy Sheriff's Corrections here locally. As the proclamation said, they often do a thankless job that's, that's so integral to public safety that they hold a little spot in my heart. It's where I started my career, let's say, a long time ago at Lake County, as a Lake County Correctional Officer. We all know our staffing shortages make things even more difficult. So a more difficult job, or a difficult job made more difficult with short staffing, working nights, weekends, holidays, mandatory overtime. It's just really, really admirable what they do. They do a great job and I want them to understand that it doesn't go unnoticed. We appreciate and thank them. Thank you.
So I'm not going to add more, but just want to make sure that everybody knows we are hiring. If you have an interest in joining the correctional officers force, please look us up at lakcountyc.gov. We're always hiring and we're looking for some good people to join us.
Do we have anyone in the public that wishes? Do we have anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment? Anyone in Zoom?
I'm glad you asked, because I, nope, don't see anybody. Sheriff, are there bonuses too with that? Just want to make sure, with corrections?
I thought Supervisor Serbata would cover that, but he didn't.
Someone get you a mic and talk about that.
Signing bonuses from $10,000 to $25,000, depending on the position with corrections.
Okay, so for the record, signing bonuses $10,000 to $25,000. Thank you. And thank you Sheriff for bringing this as a standalone proclamation, this year it's really important. Thank you. He always makes us feel great about pictures.
Good job.
We have some great public speakers today, I think you guys practice this frequently, don't you all? Okay. Our next item.
6.7, yes. 6.7912 a.m., presentation of proclamation designing, designating the month of May as Tourism Month in Lake County.
And who, yes, and then Vice Sheriff Simon, do you want to assist with this one?
Hi, my name is Ariseli, I am the Vice President of Lower Lake FFA. Proclamation designating the month of May as Tourism Month in Lake County. Whereas tourism plays a critical role in Lake County and the state's economic prosperity. And whereas, a reboot, a rebooted travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the entire state, generating more than $134.7 billion in visitor spending in 2022. And whereas, travel has been the foundation of healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in California, supporting 1.1 million jobs in 2022. And whereas, spending by travelers benefits state and local government alike generating $11.9 billion in tax revenue in 2022 to support essential public services and programs that benefit all Californians in Lake County. Tourism generated 175.8 million in visitor spending, 13.1 million in state and local tax revenue, and 1,800 jobs in 2022. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with stragging economic impacts affecting each community in California, including Lake County. And whereas, California's tourism industry resilience has brought the economic impact of travel more than 90% back to pre-pandemic levels in 2022. The rebound of travel will continue to drive the building of California and economic and workforce. And whereas, the California Legislature in 2016 declared every May as California Tourism Month to celebrate the positive economic impact of the tourism in California. And whereas, Californians can help put their fellow Californians back to work and support the recovery of local businesses by traveling in California. Now, now therefore, it can be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors designates May 2023 as Tourism Month in Lake County and urged the residents of Lake County to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in Lake County. Passed and adopted this ninth day of May 2023.
Great job.
Thank you. Is that on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, great reading. Yes, tourism is off to a really great start this season. I'm sure a lot of you have seen a lot of activity around the county. We've got Conacti Harbor was open for the wonderful event last weekend for the...
Rotary.
Rotary.
Rotary, I'm sorry, lioness, we have lioness, for the Rotary. And we've also got Hotopia getting ready to open midsummer, so we've got a lot of new product for visitors. People are anxious to come out and get around. We've got a full lake, which is the first time in five years we've had that. And so I think there's going to be an excellent year for tourism, and we all benefit. And thank you very much for this proclamation, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Tourism being one of, you know, just a large driver for the county. Our agricultural community being prepared, all of our businesses said the lake is full. But the end of the month, the big holiday, we have Lower Lake Days that kind of kicks that off and some other parades. But being prepared for the, you know, the travelers are going to be coming through. So I want to thank the TID for doing everything they do. We're telling our story, we're safe, beautiful, clean and hospitable here in Lake County. And every business needs to show that as they come through, because each one that comes through is a customer that we want to return. And so I really appreciate all the hard work by everyone here in Lake County and especially the TID in telling our story and the Board supporting that. So here comes the summer, it's going to be a good one. Thank you.
I have a couple of things to report from this weekend because, you know, the Valley Fire of 2015 really, you know, really devastated the Cobb community. And after so many years of a lot of volunteers, a lot of people lending a hand, a lot of outside investors coming in, we had some big events coming back. We had the Bike Monkey eight-hour race, which came back for the first time last year, but had just under 400 riders registered, plus their pit crews and their families and their friends. And Bike Monkey started this race in 2006, so this was a longstanding tradition before the fire. They invested an incredible amount in the forest, they planted over 1,000 trees. Everywhere you went, you saw this weekend, you saw bikes on cars, not just because of this race, but because of the high school championship race at Six Sigma, where there were 736 registered riders, plus their families and coaches and friends and everyone who came out to watch. And then, as Brian mentioned, Conacti Harbor had 275 guests. For the first time, all those rooms were open, the convention center was open. And later this week, there's going to be food and services for the general public. So it's been a long time coming for both the boggs race, the Conacti, and also one more thing, we had, what was it, Vibe Fest at Medalla Springs, which had about 1,300 people coming. Now there's some kinks to work out with that, we'll work on that going forward. But to have all of these people coming back to our communities and our county impacts everything that we do. And so for every person that's helped promote, volunteer, organize and those outside investors, we are so, so grateful, we're going to keep it up. Anybody else from the Board want to share?
I'll just say that I can see the lake from my house and I can tell how our economy is doing by the activity that's going on on our lake. And the activity right now is a much higher level than I've seen in many years in the past. Looking forward to Memorial Day, that is kind of the kickoff to our tourism time. That's when everybody wants to show up and I'm thinking the lake's going to be jam-packed. Be careful out there, but definitely have fun, it's looking like a beautiful season for us this year.
Yeah. Do we have anyone from the public or in the Zoom room?
Nobody in Zoom.
Okay. Yeah, come on down for the picture. Thanks for coming in today, Brian.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay. Okay, we've got one more proclamation, so I'll...
Two more.
No, but we have the FFA one, do you want to be here for that or do you want to? Okay, we'll stop after them. Okay? 6.8? Yes.
6.8913 a.m., presentation of proclamation designating the day of May 9th, 2023, as Fentanyl Awareness Day in Lake County.
Supervisor Green, do you want to help out with this one?
Hello, my name is Ariana Covrubius and I am the reporter for Lower Lake FFA. Proclamation designating the day of May 9th, 2023, as Fentanyl Awareness Day in Lake County. Whereas, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid that, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, is 50 times stronger than heroin and 100 times more potent than morphine. And whereas, fentanyl use and poisoning impacts adults and youth of all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds. And whereas, according to the CDC, 107,375 people in the United States have died of drug overdoses and poisoning. 67% of those deaths involved synthetic opioids such as fentanyl. Many of those deaths are attributed to fentanyl being mixed with other substances, leaving many people unaware that they were taking fentanyl. And whereas, through acknowledgement of Fentanyl Awareness Day, Lake County creates a space for organizations, community, affected individuals and family members to come together, sharing experiences as a whole group to counsel our youth and the public about the dangers of fentanyl. And whereas, with commitment and support, reducing fentanyl misuse and poisoning can be prevented. However, success will not occur overnight. Our patience and continued commitment to education and prevention are imperative. And whereas, while expanding access to fentanyl test strips and the emergency overdose reversal drug, naloxone is critical to reducing fentanyl use, poisoning and overdose. The stigma that surrounds drug use, addiction and overdose often makes it difficult for communities to implement these measures and effectively address the opioid crisis. And whereas, today, the County of Lake joins all those who have been affected by the fentanyl use in spreading awareness of the harm that fentanyl can cause and reminds all community members that anyone can save a life by educating themselves on the signs of an overdose, learning how to administer naloxone and calling 911. And whereas, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare and education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding and action to address fentanyl use and poisoning in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisor join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services, Substance Use Disorder Services, do hereby proclaim that May 9th, 2023, is Fentanyl Awareness Day in the County of Lake. Passed and adopted this 9th of May, 2023.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Elise Jones, I'm the Deputy Director of Administration for Lake County Behavioral Health Services. Unfortunately, Lake County is on the front lines of the fentanyl crisis and the opioid crisis. We have at least the first or second highest rate of opioid overdose in the state of California, per capita. These are mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, aunts, uncles, these are our community members. And the biggest medicine that we can offer is prevention. We know that people who struggle with any type of substance use disorder, particularly opioid use disorder, overwhelmingly have a history of child maltreatment. That's not everybody, but overwhelmingly, we know that a history of a rough childhood confers a risk for later mental health and substance use disorders. So the biggest and strongest thing that you can do to invest and make sure that we can overcome this crisis is to invest in your children, to make sure that we have safe and strong communities, to make sure that our kids feel connected and loved. That being said, Lake County Behavioral Health Services does offer a wide range of services and we implore anybody to come and connect with us who needs help. Also, don't be afraid to get trained on the use of Narcan. As was stated, a lot of people take fentanyl and don't realize it. So from a harm reduction standpoint, making sure that people who are going to make dangerous choices do so safely is important. And we are definitely here to support that effort and again, encourage anybody who's needing support to come through our doors and ask for help. We also operate five peer support centers around the lake, that is a conduit for services as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing this to us today and for speaking from the heart. Do we have anyone else?
I will.
Yeah.
I would like to just highlight that our seniors at times get put on pain management. Just the reason why I know is my grandfather was on pain management for his back, he didn't want to get surgery. So they basically just give you this until, until they pass, basically. And so what happens is, people that care or family members or something of the like will, someone of the like will have access to some of their medication and commonly, fentanyl is pretty normal for that type of pain. So I just wanted to highlight that and make sure to, you know, keep an eye on your seniors, their medication, make sure it's put away and ensure that they don't overdose as well, because sometimes they don't know they're taking too much and it doesn't take that much to overdose. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. And do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room? Come on up.
Good morning, Willie Spade, the Lake County Fire Chief. We started about two years ago Leave It Behind Program and so we just got another allotment of those. So anybody, predominantly we go out and overdose, we'll leave a kit with them. But I do have them at the station, so if you have somebody that needs them, you can come by our station on Olympic Drive and, like I said, we got a grant and built our own kits that started with the SafeRx program with Kim Tangerman. And so we have probably given out a couple hundred. We'll periodically go through the homeless encampments and drop them off, but we're kind of a neutral, we're not any threat to them. So we just really do a quick five-minute in-service, comes with two doses, some personal protective equipment, small pocket mask, and it's been pretty successful. So if you guys do know somebody that needs them, you can come by our station, we'll give you a kit. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to ask, our FFA students, have you ever been trained on Narcan or know what it is? You do? Do you want to speak into the microphone?
I haven't necessarily been trained, but I have reviewed what Narcan is. Because of the large amount of overdoses and some of the research I've done for school projects, I've come across what Narcan is and what it does. And I actually did want to ask, did you need to have a concern to need it? Or can you just go and be taught so you can be prepared if you ever come across someone having an overdose?
We can just give them out, we give a quick in-service.
You want to talk about it?
We've got them, the school nurses have them. So it has widely gotten into multiple hands in the community. So I am totally cool doing the five-minute in-service where a high school student wants to keep it in their person, by all means, and like I said, we've had quite a bit of fentanyl overdoses that it isn't what they thought they took, and including liquids and bills and cannabis and everything else. So it is a very dangerous and wide variety of these kids interacting with.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, I just want to say thank you.
You bring up a good point, so SafeRx is a program actually through Health Services and they also do trainings on Narcan. Unfortunately, I'm not prepared to have any dates of that, but you can feel free to contact Behavioral Health Services or Kim Tangerman, who is the head of SafeRx, if you want trainings, I know she does them periodically. And there's also Narcan available through that program through Health Services. And there's also Narcan available through that program through Health Services.
Okay, great. And we're just at a point in time where we all need to be prepared and trained and have it in our homes and with us at all times. Supervisor Spatier.
I just want to use a moment for hopefully moving things forward. I know that the state of California has denied a lot of fentanyl bills to try and decrease the amount of fentanyl that we're finding in our streets because it's mostly coming from overseas. We need our feds, we need our state to do the job that they need to do to reduce the amount that's here. But on our end, I would just want to keep pushing us, and I know we're waiting for details when it comes to the opioid settlement, but we need to have the conversation about how we're going to invest those funds that we receive from the opioid settlement in order to better prepare, not better prepare, but better serve those that need our help. We don't have the services available here. There's a lot of services out of county that we can't connect with people with, but we need to have those conversations. We can't ask our partners to do their part if we're not making sure that we're doing everything we can on our end. And I know that behavioral health works hard, but we also do know that we have some funding available. We've talked about having the conversation. I just want to bring it up again to push us to have this conversation ASAP.
Thank you. Okay. Sam? Oh, sure. Come to the microphone.
April Gamber, Lake Kennedy Hero Health. This one hit home for me today because we lost somebody. Many of you may not know her. Her name was Kayla Main. And I remember her approaching me in the streets and saying to me, "I'm going to do it this time. I'm going to do it this time." She died. And she died of an overdose. As stated, there are resources out there, but if they're hidden and they're not readily shared and made available, they can't reach the people that need them the most. So, I'm sorry I'm so emotional. She was just, she was young, she was a mother, she was a community member, she was someone who was really trying to better herself and made one bad decision. And so, we will facilitate Narcan training. We will also link you with resources in the community. We're working hard to get those resources available to everybody. And you are never too young to learn, never. I have a three-year-old granddaughter and she can't really do anything, but she tells me, "This will make people better grandma." And so, please, please do your part and educate yourself and your friends and your family. It doesn't matter if you're old or if you're young or if you're a senior or if you use or if you don't, or if you have a family member, or if you're just, you know, a citizen walking down the street, that is a missed opportunity if we don't take initiative to educate ourselves. So, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, April.
Sure.
Meredith Neuer, Chief Deputy Probation Officer with Lake County Probation. I just wanted to state that we partner with Lake County Behavioral Health and also support the community in their struggles with the substance abuse and all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Okay, what's our next item?
6.9, 9:14 a.m., presentation by the Lake County FFA on their work and accomplishments.
Yes, all right. And you can all go down there. And you want to come up too? Okay, you all know what to say? Kelsey, well, why don't you all go down? And it sounds like Kelseyville's going first. It's all right.
You got 10 minutes. You could say whatever you want.
You could. 20 if you want, no. Just talk to us about your experiences. It sounds like you're both seniors. Have you been with FFA the whole time? All of those things. Yes.
Well, once again, I'm Stephen Frase.
And Samuel Van Oven.
And I'm the President of the Kelseyville FFA Chapter. And Samuel, here's the Sentinel. Me personally, I've been with the FFA since as soon as I was able to. My summer between eighth grade and freshman year, I started raising pigs for the Lake County Fair. And that, and then everything just kind of snowballed from there. I got into the pigs, and then when school came around, I got into all the speaking competitions. And then sophomore year rolled around and I was able to get a spot on the officer team. And so, we started running all the meetings and all the things at school and going even more speaking competitions. And now, senior year, I'm the President of the Chapter and getting ready to wrap up my FFA career. It's, I've had a lot of great experiences. It's taught me a lot about leadership and how to speak to people and just conduct yourself, you know, well. So, I've had a lot of fun with the FFA and learned a lot of valuable lessons.
Well, yeah, a little bit of a different path for me. I started my high school career at Clear Lake High School for the first two years, actually the first year as a freshman. And I actually transferred over to Kelseyville High to pursue more of the agricultural background that it has for FFA. And sophomore year was quarantine, you know, so I couldn't do much, you know, with the FFA program. But as junior year came and rolled around, I went to my first leadership program in Monterey, and it was a blast and it really got me hooked on the FFA as an organization. And throughout that years, last year, I learned a lot. And seeing the officers such as Steven and stuff conduct meetings at the chapter level really inspired me to try to run for office as my junior year coming into senior year. And yeah, it's been a blast and it's really affected me as a person, leadership-wise, and has taught me to jump out of my comfort zone a lot. And I'm just really grateful for this organization, so.
Good job, Kelseyville.
Yeah, just keep standing.
Good morning. My name is Yvette Ortega. I am the President of Lower Lake FFA. I am currently a senior and I have been a part of FFA since my eighth grade year, so going on five years. Myself and my team are very excited to be here to tell you about the momentous year we've had. It's actually Lower Lake FFA's 10-year anniversary this year, and we continue to make Lower Lake history. So, I'm going to let my team tell you a little bit about what we've done this year.
Hi, I'm Ally Beckstead, Treasurer of Lower Lake... What? Oh. Hi, I'm Ally Beckstead, Treasurer of Lower Lake FFA, and I'm so excited to tell you all about our new barn. Although Clear Lake is a rural area, we have city-like restrictions which withhold our students from taking animals to the fair. However, since our new barn finally got built, members of Lower Lake FFA have the opportunity to take animals to the Lake County Fair. Our fair team this year consists of four members taking lambs, three members taking goats, one member taking a steer, and one member taking a turkey. This year's fair team triples the size of fair teams in the past.
Hi, I'm Brittany Wade, the Secretary of Lower Lake FFA. Through this year, our school year, our chapter has volunteered for many community services such as volunteering at Faults Family Winery, guarding parking, Chair of Comer's Car Show, fair setup and teardown, Conacti District Board Meeting, and luau dinner, pumpkin patch for Lower Lake Elementary Kindergarteners, cemetery cleanup for our local cemetery in Lower Lake, Race Across America, Lower Lake Community Action Group dinners every month, which we have one tonight, helping out all Lower Lake parades, judges breakfast, crab chipino dinner, and child advocacy walk.
Hi, I'm Ariana. I'm the reporter for Lower Lake FFA. And I would like to speak to you about some huge recent milestones in our chapter. Myself and two other students, including Shacey, our Sentinel, and Katie Martinez, went to the state FFA competition. I went for prepared public speaking, so I wrote an eight-minute essay speech and memorized it, answered questions. I wrote about a farmer's purpose. And then Shacey and Katie participated in the first-ever Spanish Creed competition. And one of our own recent graduates, Steven Beckstead, made it to state for office. So, he ran for state office and he got the opportunity to travel with us down to Ontario, which we also went to a state conference for FFA. Over 7,000 FFA students attend and we just have an absolute blast. And I know that some of our new members have gotten the chance to experience FFA for what it really is, and they're excited about the ag program. One thing Lower Lake FFA tries to instill in the community is repping the agricultural education and proving that it has a positive impact on students and their lives moving forward from high school.
Okay, hello. My name is Shacey Pecostre. I am the Sentinel for the Lower Lake FFA Chapter. And I was one of the three that was lucky to go to state competition level. I did the Spanish Creed as well as Katie Martinez. This was the first year that the Spanish Creed was done, and it was really exciting because growing up Hispanic in America is, it's really easy for us to feel left out and not included. And FFA, the organization, really found a way to include us and let our culture feel appreciated as well as our language. I feel that the Spanish Creed really found a way to involve a lot of Hispanic-speaking students. It was really exciting. The Spanish Creed really, some people might just see it as another competition, but I see it as a way that a lot of us are being welcomed and we are being appreciated for our culture and our language. And it just shows the growth in our society to include us in such a big organization, and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ariselli Rubio. I am currently the Vice President of Lower Lake FFA, and I'm here to just recognize the awards we've earned this summer, so I'm just going to start listing them. We're going to start off by awards earned at fair. Clean Star Award earned by Ariana Corubius and Ariselli Rubio. Showmanship Award earned by Ariana Corubius, Ariselli Rubio, Ally Beckstead, and Steven Beckstead. Supreme Grand Champion Ag Mechanics Award earned by Steven Beckstead. Large Animal Round Robin Champion Award earned by Steven Beckstead. Blue and Gold Award earned by Steven Beckstead. First place in goat showmanship earned by Steven Beckstead. Second place in goat showmanship earned by Ally Beckstead. First place in breeding class with goats earned by Ally Beckstead. Fifth place in lamb showmanship earned by Ariana Corubius. The next award will receive the Mendo Lake Opening and Closing Ceremonies. The opening and closing ceremonies is a public speaking competitions earned by teams. This year, we took five teams and they all placed. First and fourth place for novice team, first and second place for open team, and second place for advanced team. Next, we continue with more public speaking competitions. These are sectional. Prepared public speaking, first place, Ariana Corubius. Third place, Lower Lake McMillan. Fourth place, Brittany Wade. And prop two, third place, Katie Martinez, Spanish Creed. First place, Yvette Ortega. Second place, Katie Martinez. Third place, Shacey Pecostre. Fourth place, Orelli Palais. Fifth place, Natalie Zavala. Sixth place, Oriana Rodriguez Espinoza. And seventh place, Ariselli Rubio. The top four in each category advance to regionals. Those who place in regional public speaking is Ariana Corubius, fourth place for public, prepared public speaking, Katie Martinez, second place for Spanish Creed, and Shacey Pecostre, fourth place for Spanish Creed. The top four in each category moved on to state competition in Fresno. Members also had the opportunity to earn awards at another Spanish Creed public speaking competition at the Golden State Field Day in San Rosa. For advanced division, Shacey Pecostre got second place, Orelli Palais got fifth place, Yvette Ortega got second place. Novice division, Katie Martinez got fourth place, and Marizel Gutierrez got fifth place. We also want to congratulate Yvette Ortega and Ariselli Rubio for receiving the FFA state degree. This is the first year we had two state degree recipients. To earn your state degree, you must have earned 1,500 in your SAE project along with other community service and leadership requirements, and many hours of data entry in our recordbooks.
That's an incredible amount of words.
One more.
We also want to recognize Steven Beckstead. He was the first California State Officer candidate from Lower Lake FFA. Steven made it through the online interviews and continue on to live interviews at the state convention. He did not place in the final 12, however, we are amazingly proud of how far he went in the interview process. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time to hear about what we've done this year. Overall, I just wanted to tell you guys that we do as much as we can for our community, and I hope that you guys are able to appreciate us as much as we appreciate you. But again, thank you, Lower Lake FFA.
Thank you. So, I have some questions, but yeah, let's. I want to know, what are the skills that you've been learning that you think you're going to need most, that are going to be useful to you as you move forward in life through finishing high school, through the military, and whatever paths that you think that you'll be going down?
I personally...
Microphone.
I think one of the big ones that I've learned is just leadership. As an eighth grader, I could have never imagined myself standing in front of a room of all kinds of people and much less leading a team. I definitely think it has greatly improved my confidence in myself and my abilities to lead others, and I hope that it can do the same for everyone else. But I know everyone takes something different from FFA.
I would have to say a skill that I've definitely learned is public speaking. If you would have talked to me a few years ago, I would have not been standing up here today. I would have been so afraid. And I think FFA has really helped me a lot with public speaking because of all the competitions we do, and I think it's really helped me come out of my shell.
So, this is actually my first year being really involved in FFA, and I would say that I learned a lot. When I first learned that I had to do the Spanish Creed, I was nervous. I'm like, oh my gosh, I need to learn five paragraphs, I need to memorize them. So, I really learned to public speak, and I learned to be confident. So, I lacked confidence. And once I got the hang of like my Spanish speaking contest, I really gained a lot of confidence and I learned how to, well, not all the way, but I learned how to kind of be confident and like speak in front of our large group of people.
FFA has helped strengthen my morals. I think one thing that I value the most about FFA and what it teaches students is hard work and that nothing is given to you, it is earned. And that is something that I've come to enjoy from FFA is putting in the hard work. I personally take animals to fair, and my advisor, Ms. Olson, said, "I was going to put blood, sweat, and tears into my project." And oh boy, did I put blood, sweat, and tears into my project. Hard work is something that I've grown to actually enjoy and enjoy the results that come out of it because you only get out what you put in, and that's something that FFA has taught me a lot about.
A skill that I've learned while being FFA is learning how to step up, knowing when you have to be there and know when you have to be a leader. Sometimes you're not ready to be a leader, sometimes you don't feel like you're not confident enough or you're not enough to be a leader, but you have to step up and do what you can do because that's part of being FFA to learn with all experience.
FFA has taught me self-confidence growth and public speaking because I'm really kind of bad at it, not going to lie. FFA is kind of like a second family to me. I love my team, like, yeah.
Give it a go. So, the skill that I most, like took most from this organization is definitely leadership. My future, moving into the military, I have been able to draw a lot of parallels between the way that we conduct ourselves like as a team, the way that our leaders work with us, can really just, I can really move over and I can use a lot of the stuff I learned, not only about being the President... not only about being the president and like running a team and being able to hear everybody's ideas and try and talk to everybody and figure out the best way to move forward, but also being on a team and being able to listen to people who have great information for me and being able to be a subordinate and listen to a leader and work for the benefit of the whole team. So that's what I've taken.
Yeah, well, besides the leadership standpoint that he just talked about, something that I definitely learned from FFA would have to be, you know, just being comfortable in new environments. I'm gonna be flying across, you know, the country to Georgia, and it's just gonna be a completely new environment for me in the Army. And I just, FFA has definitely taught me, you know, those styles of just, you know, being comfortable in new environments and getting the most out of those environments because, you know, us as humans, we get pretty nervous when we're, you know, across different, you know, countries, states, you know. I don't have any family around and stuff like that. And FFA has definitely taught me, you know, to get the most out of those experiences. So yeah, very grateful.
Who here in the audience graduated from FFA or was in the audience? I, see, I saw this smile in the back here. There's just some pride. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself to these folks? And you can talk about the skills you learned in FFA too. That's right.
Good morning, I'm Lieutenant Bingham of Lake County Sheriff's Office. After watching all of you speak, I hope I don't disappoint. I think you guys hit the nail on the head. A lot of people kind of forget that when they're talking about FFA, they think ag programs, agriculture, growing things, ag mechanics. And they forget what FFA is really about. And you guys hit the nail on the head. Leadership, service to your community, learning skills that you don't currently have, and a commitment to something other than yourselves. And that will serve you well in your life. I went to Middletown High School. I started in 4H when I was nine years old. And when I went into high school, I moved into FFA. And like many of you, I stayed in FFA all through high school, went all the way up to president of my chapter, state competitions, the state conferences and everything. And it has served me well in my life. You said it, and I think what you said was very poignant to me. You may not always be ready for leadership, but you recognize when it's time to step up and take that leadership role and better your team, better your community, and better those people around you. And that's what it's about. I think that's one of the things we kind of forget sometimes in this day and age is service to our community. And that's one of the best things you can do is serve your community and serve others. And I commend all of you for taking the time to join FFA and commit to the program and learn what you've learned. And then for the Board of Supervisors to have you here today, to have this experience, I think it's something that you're not gonna forget in your lives. I know I haven't forgot my time in FFA and the conferences and all the competitions that I did. Robert's Rules of Order, I think that was something that I struggled with for many years till I got it. So again, thank you, guys. I think it's great that the program has continued. And it's great to see that Lower Lake has an FFA program because when I was in high school, and we won't say when, they did not have a program. So it is great to see that the program has expanded in Lake County.
Thank you. Lieutenant Bingham, would you say we're in good hands?
I think we are in good hands. It is great to see and very impressive, guys. You did an outstanding job and kind of made me feel good to be from an FFA program.
Yep, come and get in the picture. And I think we have some words from Vice Chair Simon, who had to step out for a moment. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, obviously, my son also was in FFA when we went to high school. I thought it was just a valuable organization. They taught him all those things you guys talked about, the leadership skills and others. So I want to thank you for all the work that you do. Every month, I go to the Lower Lake Action Committee Group. The Lower Lake Crew is there serving food to the community during that meeting. And so I see it month after month, their service that they do for their local community, which is excellent. And one other thing, and I don't know if you guys asked this, but obviously, at the end of the year, we have the fair. You have animals that are being raised. Are any of you raising animals? And if you are, if you could say what you're raising, I'd greatly appreciate that. Grab a mic.
I'm Ally. I'm gonna take two lambs this year. In the past, I've taken goats and turkeys.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Ari. This is my second year taking market lambs to fair.
Hi, I'm Brittany. This is my first year doing fair, and I'm taking a meek goat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna open it up and see if we have anyone from the public. Anyone in the chambers would like to come up and speak? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. We have a comment here from Supervisor Spatier.
So I appreciate the program. To me, it's so much put into one. Obviously, you've talked about the skill sets, but I also see it as somewhat of a potential internship program that leads you towards a career pathway. That doesn't mean it's what you have to do, but it provides the skill set so you can, if you wanted to, and continue down that pathway. But I also know some of you, and this is not the only thing you do. We've highlighted one portion of what you're accomplishing in your lives. And I just want to make sure that we recognize that you're going to school, you're accomplishing your schoolwork, you're part of other groups, you're in marching band. That's a weekend activity. And so I know that you're doing so much more than this, and I just want to make sure the public is aware. And I have to say, I heard Stephen's name way too much. And I've heard his name multiple times in the past too. And he never shows up except at football games. I think you're gonna have to try to bring him to the next time you talk about him. Appreciate all he's done for Lower Lake. Appreciate that he's got family that continues as well. But keep aiming high.
We tried to get Stephen here. We did. He had a long weekend of riding bikes, though. He competed in the eight-hour race in box, and he got second in the pro category. And he's been coaching these kids all year since he graduated last year. So he had a full weekend, and he had to work today. Yeah, so I wish he was here too. But thank you for being here today. I didn't want to ask you to come in August because I know you're a little busy with your animals. So I thought following the conference, this would be a good time for you to come. I hope we can make this an annual thing, whoever's gonna be chair next year, to invite you back and help us with our meetings. As you can see, we've got some real highs that we talk about, and we have some real lows too. And this is the work of governing our county. And you are our future leaders. And I know that you're gonna step up in ways that we can't even imagine. And I know I'm confident that we're in good hands with all of you. So thank you so much for being here. And thank you for taking the time and being here too to appreciate this. So we're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 10:30. So thank you for your patience. We're coming back, and we will move to our 610 item. 10:00 AM consideration of the March 31st, 2023 Report of Lake County Poled Investments. And we have our treasure tax collector, Patrick Sullivan, here. Carlos.
Good morning, Board. Patrick Sullivan, treasure tax collector. I'm here with Carlos Lobletos from Chandler Asset Management. And he can do the presentation. I will put it up on the board.
So we're in May now. And I think, sorry. I apologize, my head's spinning just on that statement alone. First of all, I just wanted to tell you, those young people that were here earlier, I do finance for a living, but I have to present it to a lot of public boards and a lot of public speaking. It's really hard to do public speaking. I have not seen a group of so well-spoken and professional, professionally-prepared kids like those kids were. They were fantastic. So I was impressed, I wanted to tell you that. Maybe, Patrick, if we go to page 11. Maybe we start with that one. So the Federal Reserve met last week, week, week and a half ago, and they raised interest rates yet again. This is something that we've been speaking of for the last several months. Actually, this is the 10th interest rate hike over, well, basically starting since the late autumn, early winter of 2021. Why is this significant to you? Remember that as an investor, well, you collect monies in the form of property taxes and revenues. That money is invested in the county pool. The county pool, in turn, invests in the bond markets where you collect interest on those funds. And when the Federal Reserve raises interest rates, what they're raising is the overnight lending rate between banks. And that has implications on longer and other types of rates that you can get for longer investments. So in essence, they're raising interest rates basically has been raising market rates, which we in turn capture in the portfolio. Every time that we have a maturity, we turn around, we reinvest it, we get a higher interest rate. The interest income continues to go up in the portfolio. And that is great news. That's the good news. The reason the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates, we've been speaking about it, and if we turn to page number five, is not so good news. It's because we have strong inflation in the United States. Prices have come up significantly. The peak was in June of 2022. If you recall, we were talking about this. They hit 9% year-over-year inflation rate. That inflation rate has moved lower, which is good news. Where now, the last print came in at 5% year-over-year change, which is positive. But it's still higher than the Federal Reserve wants it to be. High prices can derail an economy. At some point, food becomes unaffordable. People can't pay their bills. It's difficult, and they'll tighten the belt, and it slows economies down. And it's not in their incentive, it's not in anybody's incentive to have high, high prices. So the Federal Reserve tries to bring prices down by making it more expensive for investors to borrow. So that means that they raise that rate, and in turn, that limits the amount of people that can borrow money to then turn around and expand their business and compete for goods and services, which drives prices up. That's the basic of it. So the good news is, it's on its way down, and the Fed's moves are certainly working, but we're not quite done. And the question is, is the Federal Reserve really done? Well, their actions have slowed the economy down. If we take a look at page number six, you can see that retail sales are definitely weaker. Consumer confidence is definitely weaker. You can just kind of blur your eyes and look at the charts and see that. If we turn to housing on page number eight, housing is definitely coming down. The prices are starting to come down because we don't have inventory. Well, let me rephrase that. The rate of change for home prices is coming down. We saw a peak back in April of last year of about 21% year-over-year change. And that change is down now to about 3% year-over-year change. The prices haven't come down. They're just not growing as quickly as they were before. It's still very expensive, affordability is difficult. But this is a direct result of more expensive borrowing. It costs more money to get a mortgage because the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates. So that pushes people out of the housing market. They're not able, it's too expensive to borrow, so they don't have the liquidity and the cash they can borrow to then turn around and compete for a house, which would drive the price of that home up. That's inflationary. So this is, it's all tied in together. I will tell you that what this is doing, the rise in interest rates is slowing the economy down. If we look at page number nine, you can see manufacturing is now in contraction territory as measured by the Purchasing Managers Index. And when we look at gross domestic product, which is how, the measure of how we grow our economy, taking a look at page 10, just take a look at the table on the left-hand side. We ended the year, when you average those three quarters, that's an annualized rate for each quarter. So that's the annual equivalent. When you average that out, it comes out to less than 1%, just slightly. We grew the economy last year by less than 1%. And this past quarter, we had, I think it was one and a half, the preliminary number. It just came out before we printed this chart. It's just showing weakness in the economy because the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates to combat high prices. Their fear is that the economy might slow down enough, but inflation stays really high. That's a condition that we last had back during the Carter years in the late 1970s. You may remember the term stagflation. That's the fear, that they want to avoid that. That's really not good for an economy. In the meantime, what does it mean to you? Well, it means that rates are higher, which means that when you buy a new bond, that bond comes with a higher yield for you, which is good news. And that's what we've been experiencing. Now, because the Federal Reserve has driven interest rates higher and because investors believe that those higher rates are creating tighter financial conditions, eventually, it's gonna slow down the economy, maybe even make it contract, a mini recession. So investors, when they think that's gonna happen, what they do is they start buying really longer bonds because they can lock into a higher yield, longer terms to pay higher. They can buy a longer bond, pick up a higher yield, and hold on to it. And if the economy does contract, eventually, the Federal Reserve has to lower interest rates, the opposite of what they're happening now. So that longer buyer can hold on to that yield, that higher yield, for a longer period of time while market rates come down. So they're not forced to reinvest faster at lower rates. They can hold on, they can protect their income. But remember that in the bond markets, when you, there's increased demand for those longer bonds. And that increased demand drives the prices for those bonds higher. And remember, in the bond markets, we talked about this earlier, when prices go up, the yield goes down. Well, that's what's happening if I took a look at that, take a look at that treasury yield curve on the right-hand side on page 12. Look at the dark green line. All we're doing is measuring the yield, the interest income, the effective earnings rate that you would get from different treasury yield across the spectrum of maturities. So three-month treasury bill, six-month, all the way up to 30 years. Notice that three and six-month and two-year are higher than anything longer, which is kind of nonsensical. You would expect to get higher interest if you're putting your money out for longer periods of time. But you're not. You're getting paid for the shorter. And that's because of that dynamic that I told you. Investors think that there may be a recession down the line. They buy longer, drive the prices up, which pushes that longer yield down. So it's tamping down those longer yields. That and the fact that the rest of the rates have not kept up with Fed activity, which has moved so quickly in such a short time. Very technical. Why am I telling you this? The reason I'm telling you this is, right now, shorter maturities are paying significantly higher than longer maturities. So one of the things that we've done with the treasury is, a lot of, the treasury receives a lot of short-term money, money that comes in. As you're aware, we have a core portfolio of money that kind of is static, doesn't really move around. But there's a season in running up to April and running up to December when the treasury collects property taxes. And some of that, some of those taxes get pushed back to the county for its projects and its initiatives. Some of it gets pushed back out to the cities in the form of sales taxes and property taxes. And then, of course, the school districts use the money to pay for their bills. So that money is short-term for the county pool. It comes in, it sits for a few months, and then it goes back out. Typically, the county would invest that money in the state pool, currently paying 2.8% on new money, almost 2.9%. No, because of this dynamic, the county worked with us to open up a new account, a side account for this short-term money, where we're now picking yields up close to 5.2%. So it's been a good move. It's been very proactive on the county treasury side, and we were able to capture this short-term. It won't always be there. It may go away. And when the state pool generates higher yields than what we're seeing available in the market, we'll switch right back and go right back to the county pool. But it's just a very proactive measure that we've done. That is not captured in these documents because we were able to finalize that shortly after March 31st. But currently, to date, we've got about $50 million in there. It's earning 5.19 per year. So we're grateful for that. We're grateful for these conditions. Having said that, the portfolio, if we turn to page 15, this is the consolidated. So this includes the component that Chandler manages on the treasury's behalf as well as the funds that the treasury staff manage themselves through deposits at the state pool, through the cash in the bank, of course, which they've made changes now to earn more yield on that as well, using sweet vehicles that are paying significantly higher yields. So even that money at the bank that used to earn nothing is now earning upwards of close to 4.9 on that money. Even that, even if it's a float, I mean, if it sits there for a little while before it gets paid out, you're earning some money on that as well. So a lot of work, a lot of work, very proactive. Everything is in compliance with California Government Code. Everything is in compliance with the county's investment policy statement. If we go to page number 16, the entire program currently is valued at $477.6 million. That includes everything, money at the bank. This is through March 31st. I think it's a little higher today.[1769.64] I think it's a little higher today. When I average everything out, you're due to earn about 2 and 1/4 per year. That was as of March. That's gone up since March because of these new investments, picking up 5.19. Back in March, the reinvestment rate, so when we factor in the money that's in LAEF, in the state pool, that's Local Agency Investment Fund, LAEF, the bank, the portfolio of securities that we manage on your behalf, the reinvestment for that. So if new money came in, or if there was a maturity and we turned around and reinvested it like what we have right now, you would average somewhere around 4%. And then again, is higher today. So that's good news. High credit quality, double A average. When you turn to page 17, you can see what you own on a global basis. Back in March, you had about 9, almost 10% of the funds were in the state pool. 22, so a little bit over, almost a quarter in federal agency securities. Those are agencies of the United States government and government-sponsored enterprises like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal National Mortgage Association, so forth. These are agencies of the United States. You were lending about, remember, you're a lender, it's the bond markets. When you buy a bond, you're lending. You were lending about a 30-year money, almost a third, 31.3% to the United States government. About 16.7% in high credit quality corporate securities. You're very well diversified. You're very, very well diversified. When you look at the term structure of the portfolio, you've got investments that do go out to the four-year range. Remember that the strategy that we developed with Treasury staff was to manage the bulk of the investments between one and three years. This includes the funds that we don't manage, so there's quite a bit upfront, and that's, of course, money that was on the lead-up to April 10th as monies were being collected. So you can see that that green bar on the far left, invested between overnight and three months, that was that run-up. Those are funds that were coming in. When we look at the yield on the portfolio, page 19, it's been growing, which is great news. Having said that, let me pause there. There is one thing that we have our eye on, that we think you should have your eye on as well. If you're listening to the news, there were two major events that have probably rocked everybody's world. The first was that we had a bank failure. Did I speak about that the last time I came in?
I think so.
Okay. So I won't spend too much time on that. Needless to say, there was an additional bank failure. It was First Republic for similar reasons, their exposure, the majority of their depositors were rich people that made their money from tech. And the same thing that happened to all the tech companies that made Silicon Valley Bank, that put them in the situation they ended up in, well, it happened to First Republic as well. They were taken over and sold in pieces. So that's over and done with. The concern was that there's a spillover and lack of confidence to the overall banking environment in the United States. We're not seeing that. We're really seeing this mainly be restricted to smaller regional banks. You don't own any of those types of bonds in your portfolio. Any banking bonds that you have are going to be large, money center, huge banks with very well-diversified depositors. So we don't have any concerns there. But of course, we monitor. If we're buying a banking name these days, it has to be very compelling from a credit standpoint and also from a return standpoint. The other thing that we're looking at right now, which I know you're looking at, is you're probably watching political football going on on Capitol Hill right now. And what I'm referring to is the debt ceiling that the United States has reached, the self-imposed debt ceiling, and the debate around raising it. So it's not to make a political statement as to which side is right or wrong. I just want to, the meeting I just had with the Treasury staff, we all agree that it's like playing chicken with a couple of Lamborghinis. There's a lot at stake here. There's a lot of money at stake. If we don't address this debt ceiling issue, the United States government will not have the ability to borrow on the short-term like it does because they're not able to incur more debt, which means that they will not have seasonal liquidity to make debt service on its obligations. So these Treasury bonds that you and the rest of the planet own might be in technical default. That's the concern. That would be the first time that the United States government would default on its debt in its entire history of, you know, over 250-plus years. It would be significant. We would be on uncharted territory. So the stakes are high. We've been here before. It happened in 2011. We're here today. So there's an incentive. The Chandler view is that there's a large incentive for the parties to come together and make an agreement on what that debt ceiling needs to look like, and there's going to have to be some give and take. They can't ignore it. The Treasury Chair, Janet Yellen, who used to be the Fed Chair several years back, she made a very conservative estimate of the United States government running out of money by June 1st. That's a very aggressive and conservative stance. Most estimates that I'm reading on various economists are estimating that that might happen sometime in July or August. So we've got our eye on that. We're avoiding maturities around that range. When we built the side portfolio for these short-term funds, we were avoiding those. We just don't, we don't think, the United States government and its ability, its taxing power, and the breadth of the economy, and the stability of the rule of law in the United States is such that, and the economy is so huge, it's astronomically huge, that there's no concern about its ability to pay. This is about its willingness to pay. So are we going to be in technical default? I don't know. No one knows the answer to that. We think that the incentives to get this done and cleaned up are very, very high. And so we believe that there's a strong probability that they're going to get this cleaned up before we hit that point where they run out of money. Having said that, we have diversified this portfolio as well as it could be diversified. The earnings are strong and getting better. I don't think you're going to see the astronomical rises in interest rates. Back to what we said about the Fed, we think the Fed may pause. Remember Silicon Valley Bank and the struggles that the banks have had, that's a direct result of rising interest rates. We talked a little bit about that last time. So it's diversified. You've met your goals of safety, followed by liquidity, and then followed by return. But mainly, safety and liquidity are the key things here. I'll stop there and take any questions you may have. You think things keep you up at night, and now you know what keeps me up at night.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Not a fun conversation. I would like to hope that, I would like to believe that there will be some solution. My guess is the solution will be to partially fix the problem and kick the can down the road rather than actually fix it for the full year. We've seen that happen multiple times in the past, and I'm guessing that's something that may happen. However, it's not in our hands, and that's the scary part. I would love to crack a joke and say, how much does FDIC cover us for these types of things on the $477 million? But what is our security level at this point if things go completely awry with the $477?
Well, very little. It's not the answer you want to hear. I want to answer that, and then I want to put that in context, because it's important to put it in context. So remember that by California Government Code, the mandate on a local government, and especially on a county and its Treasury tax collector and the Treasury, is that you maintain safety, and then after you ensure the safety of the portfolio, that there's liquidity, meaning that the money is available when you need it, when you need it to pay obligations and to pay the participants. And then, thirdly, after those two goals are met, then you can start thinking about generating a return for this portfolio. Safety, liquidity, return, in that order. The way that that is mainly achieved is, number one, by following California Government Code. California Government Code is very restrictive. It really has you invest in the safest of investments that are available to any investor on this, in the investment world. And that's generally high credit quality, interest-bearing securities, bonds. That's what you buy. You're not buying stocks that are wild, where you can have a 30% negative return and a loss. The stock markets were on average down 22% in 2022. There was no place to hide. You avoided that because of the safety requirements imposed on you by law. So there's your first layer. The second layer is that California Code limits you to five years or shorter. So you're not buying super-long-term bonds in the 30-year range like Silicon Valley Bank did and got them in trouble. You avoided that because you're much shorter. Indeed, when I average out the investments in the investment portfolio of securities, that averages out somewhere around 1.7, 1.8 years. And when we fold in the investments that are very liquid, meaning the funds at the bank and the funds in LAEF, well, your average is actually even shorter. In fact, that average right now is at 1.24 years. It's that March 31st column, the second line down, the modified duration. So you're short, and that's by necessity because you also have participants who need money from the pool to pay their bills, the school districts mainly, and of course, the county itself. So that's another measure of safety that you're applying under the portfolio. And then on top of that, you have sector limits. So you can't buy more than 30% in corporate bonds. You have limits on what you can buy there. But Treasuries and Agencies, you have no limits because they are considered generally the safest investments on the planet. So if the safest investment on the planet may be in a technical default, what does that say about all the rest of the investments? Well, we don't think that it's a run-for-the-hill scenario, but it would be uncharted territory. What can you do? You can diversify the portfolio from a sector standpoint. You've done that very successfully. I think you can see that, the pie charts on page, there we go, page 17. You've diversified the portfolio. You can diversify your maturities. Well, you can see that quite well. You've done that on page 18. You have diversified, I don't think we put the issuers in here, but we have a list of issuer. We track all, how much are you exposed by issuer? So you've diversified the issuers carefully. This is an anomaly where you cannot control it. None of us can do anything about it, other than to write our Congress representative and tell them our opinions on it. And that will be diverse. Obviously, it's the democratic process. But you've done everything you can to protect yourself. Deposits, what's that? If we're in a technical default, if the United States government is in a technical default, what does that do to the dollars in your bank accounts? How is the value of that dollar going to be impacted? We don't know. So what is at stake here? The stakes are very high. That's why we believe there's going to be a deal that's going to get cut. It will likely be last minute, and like you stated, it will probably entail some portion of it getting kicked down the can, where we may be doing this again in another five, 10 years.
So just to follow up, are there any specific, like LAEF being a California institution, is that safer than some of the other places that we're investing in, such as U.S. Treasury? Are there locations where it's safer for us to be?
To answer the first question, no, they're very safe. LAEF is a very well-run program and with a long track record of providing safety, liquidity, and return to local governments in the state of California. They have a very good track record. They're a great team. But they invest in the same markets that you do. They're buying Treasuries and Agencies, just like you are. There's no other place to run. That's why I'm saying it's uncharted. So is there a safer place? You could bury your, you could take dollars and put them under a mattress, you couldn't. We're talking about a $500 million investment program. You can't do that. My mattress isn't big enough. You wouldn't want that. But even that, that means you're in U.S. dollars. Okay, well, what happens if the authority backing dollars can't pay its debt? We don't know what that's going to do to the value of that dollar or to the value of these bonds. We just don't know. So it's something, people are kind of waking up, but Wall Street has not worried about it up until now. Now you're starting to see it. There's a security, looking at code, I don't think you'd be eligible for it, but there's a type of security called credit default swaps. It's basically a fancy Wall Street way to buy insurance on the default of a bond. The rate, the cost to buy those have gone up significantly just for those maturities when people anticipate that the government will run out of funds, and just in case they don't come up with a new debt ceiling for it. So it's interesting. If you look at the longer bonds, their value has, the cost to insure that has not gone up. It's been pretty steady. People are just worried about that window because they know that at some point, a deal will get made. And if it's a technical default, likely it'll be that debt service might get delayed. A delay of debt service, we're not in the business of delayed debt service. The county needs to get paid when the county is owed. That's kind of how it works in the capital markets. When an investor puts money in, you get paid when the money's due. So a delay is not a good thing, but that's what people are really worried about right now.
So just my last question, and I'm not intelligent in comparison to your knowledge on this kind of stuff, but as investments mature, are other counties choosing not to reinvest at this moment in time to kind of say, let's hold off and see what's going to happen? Or is it automatically being reinvested? What are other counties doing?
Other counties are, sorry.
That's just my question.
Other counties are not ceasing reinvestments. They're still invested in the markets. What we're seeing is avoidance of those summer months when we think that if anything happens, it would really impact those months. So let's say that they don't reach a deal on the debt ceiling, the government runs out of money, they shut the government down, you won't be able to drive up to Yosemite. You can't drive up to Yosemite now. The snows and the flooding keep you from doing it. But you won't be able to drive up to Sequoia or Yosemite or Lassen, which is a place I love to hike. They'll shut that down. Social Security payments might get delayed. You know, just like last time, they shut government services down for a season. What's happening now is that they won't have enough money to make debt service that is now due. And they won't be able to do it until a deal is reached, and then they can go borrow, and then they can in turn turn around and make debt service on what they owe. So it's that window, that window, investors are generally avoiding it. So those reinvestments, it's not automatic, there's, you know, but yes, it's automatic in the sense that we want to get it back reinvested in the markets to earn something on it and diversified. Because if not, it's sitting at the bank earning a lower yield. And again, in dollars, dollars backed by the United States government. So we do want to get it invested, but right now, the general strategy that I'm seeing counties follow is they're trying to mainly avoid those months where they might be in question as to whether the government reaches a deal, and if they don't, that they run out of money.
So I have one last question, and I apologize for taking up so much time. We created a strange policy in the sense that it is not looking at our Treasury tax collector as the official person to sign off. It's the Board of Supervisors. I don't believe we've changed that. Do you have the flexibility you need to make changes to what we're doing here, rather than having to approach us and get the approval of those things? I just want to make sure that you have that flexibility to work with Patrick rather than having to wait to get on our agenda and things like that.
Yeah, I think I can respond to that question, Supervisor Sabatier. What happened when the board delegated authority to the Treasury tax collector at the beginning of the year? That unwound that issue. There were issues related to that, but when you delegated that authority, that delegation is whole and complete. I essentially stepped into your shoes at that point and assumed that full command and authority over investments that you previously held yourselves. So as long as that delegation is in effect, I don't see any issue with it because if there's any policy or strategy agreed upon that indicated a board role, generally speaking, I am now in that role, and that's why we're engaged in the regular reporting. So from my office perspective, we don't have any concerns. I don't know if County Council wanted to weigh in on that at all.
I haven't seen that delegation, but I'm just going to take the Treasury tax collector, Mr. Sullivan, on that note. And I think, on this item at least, the action that's being requested is just the acceptance of the report itself.
Yeah. It was just a concern, and I had an assumption that we needed to change more than just that delegation. I thought we needed to change a document or something, so, okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Turn in to page 17 and the lovely pie chart. So it sounds like you're reporting that although not reflected in the last quarter report before us today, there's going to be an increased U.S. Treasury to take advantage of the short-term interest rates. But even in the quarter shown on this report, it looks like our position actually declined 0.4%. So I'm guessing even if we pick up another issue, it'll be a percentage change in that ballpark. Maybe we'll tick back up to 31.7, maybe we'll crack 32 or something like that. So to your fundamental policy question, where's the country headed, and are they going to default on this debt? I guess it does create a question about, is this in the ballpark of the right ratio? And even if we take the uptick on the short-term funds, is that really changing anything versus bigger percentage swings just in the three months reported in Agency Holdings, close to 5%? Cash went down about 2%. So I'm just, it's a snapshot in time. I know it's not anything we're going to get married to, but taking that we may have put a little more cash into bonds, you know, are we seeing something that's within the realm of normal variances? Because we're talking a little bit about picking up some more bonds, but it isn't really a major change in our allocation. But there are things in here that are a little bit bigger on the swing that we haven't talked about, including just a 1.7 uptick in Corporate Holdings. If we're not sure whether we're heading into a recession or not, how does Chandler weigh those risks? So I guess I'm glad to hear that we're picking up more U.S. Treasuries even in the face of So I guess I'm glad to hear that we're picking up more U.S. Treasuries, even in the face of doubt. But I saw some larger percentage swings in the holdings overall that maybe you could speak to very briefly.
Absolutely, Supervisor Green. So the charts that you're looking at, look at the entire consolidated investment program. So it includes components that Chandler does not manage on your behalf. And the swings that you're seeing partially are because, if you notice, you have a very large cash position through the December, pie chart on the right-hand side, almost 12%. And then you can see that it went down to 8.6. So that 12% is because there was a run-up in tax collection in December, up to December 10th. And then it takes a period of time for some of those payments to get passed through to the participants and so forth that we talked about earlier. So that will shift the overall picture around. And then similarly, in March, there's a run-up to cash collection up through April 10th. And so that will shift those percentages around. But to your point, if we were to remove those components and just look at the portfolio of securities, the allocations to treasuries have not shifted much. The new side portfolio is just new cash that has been diversified mainly into treasuries and agencies. And the majority of what we've purchased have been federal agencies because just the yield pickup was attractive vis-à-vis a treasury. But again, they're an agency of the federal government. Our view is this, our view is that the allocations are good. They are dynamic, but they don't shift hardcore over a short-term period. We like to make incremental shifts in the portfolio because that's one of the things. We view ourselves as risk managers in many ways alongside of being an investment manager. We're a risk manager. We're trying to manage risks on this portfolio. And so when we determine the allocation to the different asset classes, that's being done through a process where we're weighing every asset class and its risk being presented and its future anticipated risk versus the payoff that we're getting for the county on the county's behalf. So that actually goes through a committee. It's a sector committee where they make that allocation decision. And right now, the allocation to treasuries, if I were to remove the pieces that Chandler does not manage, to kind of give you an idea, I keep some updates. And that, I mean, that allocation shouldn't have shifted very much. But to give you an idea, through the month of April, just the investment portfolio of securities, it makes up about 38, 39% of the portfolio in treasuries and about 24, 25% in federal agencies. So that doesn't, to give you an idea, three months prior, that 38.6% in treasuries was 40%. So it's within a range. We're not making gigantic wholesale changes, always incremental. And we think that the allocation is correct and it's right. And we have a conviction that this is going to get solved and we're not going to go into technical default. But as the supervisor stated earlier, we're not in control.
I would also just add to that, next time we do this presentation, you will see a more significant change to the cash allocation. And I just wanted to make that point. Because we have adjusted our account structure with our operational bank, Wells Fargo, we've brought the cash down very close to zero. We're on a daily basis just bringing the cash into our account that we need to pay the bills. Everything else is being invested. So that's part of that liquid account that was referenced. We've moved more money to our custodial bank, where it's being placed in those funds that Carlos discussed. At Wells Fargo, we're utilizing a sweep vehicle, which while it is a money market fund, because of its type, I guess I'd highlight it's made up mostly of treasuries and related instruments. So even if you see an increased allocation in money market, that fund is actually holding treasuries in the same way we're talking about the other pools that are out there. I mean, most of, because we are limited in what we can hold, almost everything is relating back to that. So you will see a change. That cash is going to go away and essentially just be more distributed into these other categories, primarily treasury and money market.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the chambers and the public or in the Zoom room?
You're looking at me? I see no hands.
Okay. Well, thank you both for coming and thank you for the update. And one more question?
Just last question. The communication between yourself and Mr. Sullivan, I take it it happens more than just every three months, like when we see you? I'm guessing there is even possibly a monthly update or something of that kind. Wondering if it's possible to have Mr. Sullivan share with us what the status is, where we are, so that we're not waiting three months and that three months, a lot could potentially happen.
I think that's two questions. Do you want to take them both or can I take the first? We, we're not speaking weekly, but we're speaking pretty regularly. If we don't speak three times a month, I'm surprised. During the banking crisis, I was actually on vacation and I was receiving phone calls, not just, not just for Mr. Sullivan, but from many of my clients at 2:00 in the morning in Kyoto, Japan. So that's our business. This is what we do for a living. I'm not ashamed of that. I'm not, and I'm not complaining. This is what we signed up for. So we have regular communications. Yours was one of those phone calls at 2:00 in the morning in Japan. But that's okay. My wife wasn't happy, but I'm okay because this is how you earn a living. But we have very regular communication. There's a couple of things that I might add to that. The Treasury and the treasurer tax collector can track what our activity is on a daily basis. There's a portal that he and his staff have access to where they can download and see what all the transactions have been for the day, what the current positions are. He can generate information that generates these pie charts that you're looking at on a daily basis. So he can see exactly what's going on on a daily basis. And then we speak probably every other week or so on related topics, on what's happening on the economy. We have a month-end statement that shows what's happening as of the official month end so that his Treasury can book earnings and book all the positions and know exactly where they stand as of month end. And then, of course, we have a meeting before this meeting where we go into much greater detail than what we're discussing here to kind of figure out the trends and make sure that we're communicating to you. So yes, the answer is there's a lot of communication.
All right. And as far as increased communication to the board and the public, one of the things that I'm hoping to do here is I'm going to begin posting monthly reports on the website. Other counties have done that, so you'll be able to view the monthly reporting at a kind of a faster pace. If you ever have any questions, anyone's welcome to reach out to me and I can expand in more detail. And if I don't have the answer, I can obtain it. But yeah, I'd like to increase the transparency of reporting and make those documents available. And that may help provide some insight into what's happening between the larger quarterly reports.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead.
I was going to wait. It would be nice to have a motion to accept the report when you're done, when you're ready.
Oh, right.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And feel free to come back if things get hairy in the next couple of months or before the next meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 6.11, 10:30 a.m., consideration of an update on the broadband action planning process by CBG Communications, Inc. This is from the admin office and we have Deputy CIO Matthew Rothstein.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. It's a privilege to again be here with you. On December 20, 2022, your board adopted an agreement with CBG Communications Incorporated for broadband action plan consulting services in the not-to-exceed amount of $245,000. You will recall Tom Robinson of CBG, their chief executive officer, appeared before your board on that date. A summary of CBG's actions and progress to date was attached to your board's agenda and available for public inspection. And Mr. Robinson and members of the CBG team are here to make a presentation and answer your board's questions and discuss next steps. Administrative office staff are likewise available and will look forward to any discussion and/or direction.
Tom, welcome and thank you for being here and thank you for your team's important work so far.
All right. Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors, for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My voice is at a fairly low timbre, like millions of people across the country are suffering from major allergies. It's been kind of a crazy season. Anyway, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. And most of it is depictions of maps and those kinds of things. Hopefully to give you an idea of the progress we're making on the broadband plan update, how it's already leading into some of the rudimentary facets of the implementation plan. And then talk about at the end, next steps, and then open it up for questions. Again, with me today is Dick Nielsen. He's our senior engineer. And Christine Rivers, who's our senior research associate. Dick is spearheading the effort on deployment side, looking at broadband deployment. And Christine on the digital equity side, looking at broadband adoption. So Dick, if you'd take us to the first slide. And one of the things that we've done is developed an interactive map. I'm going to let Dick just take you through just a couple, three things on the map. But it'll show you the depth and breadth of what we're starting to populate the interactive map with. And it's allowing us to do the kind of detailed analysis that we believe will be important in determining what's the best path forward for expanding deployment of broadband in Lake County. And then also what are the areas where we need to target our efforts related to enhancing broadband adoption. So Dick, go ahead.
Okay, make sure I'm not muted. Okay. Obviously, this is a map of the county, Lake County. And this allows us to do multiple, multiple things. It allows us to bring in different layers with different information. And I'll just start by, let's see, I'll just start by showing you a couple of these broadband providers. And I want to kind of hesitate right there for a minute. We keep talking about broadband and broadband is a defined term. Now, there are different definitions, but generally broadband means faster internet service, right? So oftentimes when we're talking about broadband, it maybe isn't broadband in the true sense. And what I mean by that, I've got AT&amp;T turned on here and you can see AT&amp;T pops in. A lot of what they have out there now is coaxial-based. It's not broadband by any of the major definitions. So I do show that they're out there. You're probably more than aware of them being there. And then we can turn on other layers, like this one is MediaCom. All the purple shows where MediaCom is. And they're, depending on the definition, they're really one of the few, if not the only, true broadband provider. I'm not going to go through all of these, obviously, for time's sake. But you can turn on and off all of these things. Again, you can just see them coming in. And that helps us to analyze, you know, the availability, where is broadband available? And then we can also turn on, and I'll show you another slide of it in a minute. We can turn on adoption slides and equity-related slides. So that gives you an idea of how we can work with the interactive part of the map. Now I've got some static maps that I'm going to show just to, again, give you a little bit of a basis, knowing that we're not covering everything that we're working on by any stretch of the imagination. But what this slide is showing is, again, you can recognize your county. Coming up from Napa, Napa County, this is this orange line on both sides of the lake. That's the state's middle mile. The state is in the process of having a middle mile network built throughout the state. And that's the main pipe. That's kind of the freeway, if you will. And then from there, we take off all of the more local roads feeding out into the, you know, into the neighborhoods throughout the county. But that has to be.
Dick, excuse me. I think you're, the interactive map.
Oh, did I switch? I got it.
You didn't switch. Go ahead.
All these years later, and I still forget that. Very simple. Here we go. Okay. I'll go back just real quick.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep. The orange line is this, the middle mile I described. So that's kind of the freeway, right? And that's bringing all of the information throughout the state. And then we branch off from there to add broadband to different neighborhoods throughout the county and that type of thing. So just letting you know where that is. This map gets real busy, and this is kind of why I went with static maps or single maps. This is showing all of the different availability, speed availability. And some of them, the first probably what, half of this chart over on the left is showing you less than broadband speeds. And then as you get up into the 50 to 100 is right on the tip of broadband. You got to get really up into the blues and the purples before you get to what is commonly referred to as broadband today. And I'll leave it at that. There are multiple versions of what broadband is. And of course, that number increases over time. So again, you can see there's a lot of internet available in, you know, in the, around the lakes and beyond a little bit, but again, not a lot of broadband. This map is kind of the opposite. This map, in a nutshell, is showing you all the red is where there's no broadband available. Now, again, I use the broadband versus internet. There is internet out in here, but it's not, it's not what is known as broadband. And there are the, here are the various speeds, depending on, today's standard is 25 forward, 25 megabits forward and 3 megabits back or return upload speeds. And then there are the different ones, and Tom can walk you through the reason for all of the different ones and the meaning of all the different ones. But again, this is probably stuff that most of you know anecdotally, if not more firm than that. Around the lake is pretty well-served, right? Again, that comes back to, and although it's not showed as such here, that's kind of the MediaCom areas. And then, of course, your population centers as you get outside or away from, away from the lake. This is a map of, and we just changed this one because it used to say broadband. These are all Intranet, Intranet providers. Most of these, let me back up a little bit. The FCC came out with a list of addresses that they call BSLs or broadband service locations. They really should have called them internet service locations because most of these numbers coming down here, these are the numbers of addresses that these can serve. Most of them are serving internet. Here's a good one, AT&amp;T. They're all copper in Lake County. And so those are, they're DSL and by definition, they don't, they don't get up to, oops, they don't get up to broadband levels. So these are all numbers of homes served by these providers, but again, it's internet speeds. I think you can take it from here for now.
Okay. So one of the things that is important to point out, and Dick, actually, if you just go back two slides, that one right there, is that the current FCC definition is 25 megabits download, 3 megabits upload. And of course, what's happened over the past couple of years with the funding flowing through the NTIA, then through the CPUC, and again, that will happen again through the BEAD program, which we expect that the money will start being available to the states this summer. But the states have to go through a process to establish how much of that funding they'll be able to get. And then they will feed it again down to the local level. Is that what they're really focusing on is 100 megabits download and 100 megabits upload as a minimum. That will be the speed which you will have to attest that you can obtain in order to receive funding through the federal and then through the state government. So you can see the challenge here. You've got 8% that are considered completely unserved. So they're less than the current FCC minimum standard. Then you've got 10% that are less than what's considered the current broadband standard, which is asymmetrical. It's still less upload than download. And then you have others that are at or above 100 slash 20. The issue is they're still asymmetrical. MediaCom provides nearly a gig worth of service in the download direction in some of its areas, but is only 35 megabits per second in the upstream direction. So even for them, getting up to the level where they can receive federal funding is going to be, in their case, not so much a challenge, but a process. And we've had discussions with MediaCom. So this is one of the things that we're working on, is this kind of multi-level pursuit of broadband enhancement in the county. Getting those that are the least served, literally leapfrogging them up into what's considered the service level in the future, at least 100 slash 100. So I just wanted to kind of tie all that up because you'll see how that affects when we get to seeking funding, how that affects where you put the priorities for seeking funding to continue to expand and enhance service. Okay. All right. Thanks, Dick. All right. So the other part of this is you do have a number of areas where broadband is available, but it's lowly adopted. Now, in some cases, less than 40% adoption rate. And the federal government has defined a number of covered populations, which it considers need to be focused on in order to increase digital inclusion or to establish more digital equity. focused on in order to increase digital inclusion or to establish more digital equity. And they've also, there's a number of, out of the $65 billion or so that's allocated nationwide under the BEED program, most of it's for deployment. Most of it's to help fund more infrastructure and infrastructure that will achieve at least 100 slash 100 capability. But there is a substantial amount of funding that will also flow through the states, but also be available to local governments directly on enhancing adoption. And they've determined that these covered populations are the ones that typically face adoption issues. So that's those with low income or individuals living in low-income households, seniors or aging individuals, incarcerated individuals, veterans who typically have a variety of issues, sort of have what we would consider multi-factors related to the digital inequities they face. Individuals with disabilities, all forms of disabilities, whether it's sight disability, a hearing disability, an intellectually challenging disability, those kinds of things. Dick, next slide. English language learners, those that either have a very limited knowledge of English, so it's their second language, or are struggling to comprehend and primarily rely on their origin language. Individuals with low levels of literacy, we typically look at educational level related to that. Individuals who are members of racial or ethnic minorities, and there are a number of, again, multi-factors that create digital inequities for them. Individuals who primarily reside in a rural area, and of course, the rural nature of Lake County contributes substantially because if it's not available, it also can't be adopted. And so one of the primary issues as you, you know, go into the, kind of the areas away from the lake, you do have those that would be able to adopt but don't have the service available to them. Children and youth, especially marginalized youth, and finally, individuals experiencing housing instability. If they don't have a primary place of residence, then getting a wireline connection, which is the kind of connection that's going to deliver that 100 slash 100 and higher, it won't be available to them. So one of the things we have been doing is looking at the CPUC's broadband adoption maps. And this is their map for Lake County. It's as of 2021 data, and so the CPUC will be working as it gains more data and builds its state digital equity map. It will update this. So you can see that a number of, and the lower adoption rates are in the brown and then, and then the red, sort of the rust brown and the red. You can see that some of these are going to naturally be related to availability. If you recall the map that Dick showed in the very beginning, that had a lot of the red as you went out towards the extremities of the county. But there are areas that do have availability and yet have low adoption, including some areas near the lake. And in some cases, it's, it's very low adoption. In other cases, it's lower adoption than you would anticipate based on the availability of broadband in those areas. So what we've started to do, and Dick showed you the multiple layers that we can look at, look at together, lay on top of each other, start to look at it geographically, you know, through a GIS system. One of the things we did is, and again, this is just kind of the rudiments of this analysis because we've, and I'll talk about how we're sort of honing in on these factors in a second. But we took one that was, you know, part of the aging population, and those with no computer or no device. And you can kind of see how, if you look at the low adoption areas, in some cases, those match up with an aging population, those that don't have access to a device. In other cases, you're going to see higher adoption than you would anticipate. And so there has to be another factor that's contributing to adoption issues in that particular area. Okay, Dick, want to go to the next slide? The next slide is one that, that is typically at the heart of any analysis is looking at those households that are below the poverty line because affordability is typically a big issue for them. And again, you can see the darker purple colors are the higher areas with lower income, you know, below the, higher percentage is below the power line. And again, you can see how they match up in some cases with the areas with low adoption. But in other cases, not so much. And there, there might be a number of contributing factors to why those with lower incomes are able to adopt. In some cases, they're taking advantage of the Affordable Connectivity Program. We have a whole layer that shows us in particular census tracts and census blocks, who is taking advantage of those programs. In other cases, we might find a lower adoption rate or accessibility rate to those programs. And those are areas we might focus on for education about the availability of those programs. So you can see how it really requires a multi-factor analysis to really get at the heart of it. So Dick, if you go to the next slide. One of the things that we're doing, and we noted this in the three-page report that we put together, is we're continuing this digital equity data gathering and really casting a wide net here. We've met with the Director of the Lake County EDC, but we're meeting with the full Economic Development Commission Board next week. We've met with the Community Development Director for the county, but we're meeting with the Planning Commission later this week. So we're really trying to continue to expand what we're gathering so that we can better interpret this data. Christine had a great meeting with the Director of the Public Libraries and looked at the efforts that they're engaged in, in spurring adoption and in making broadband access available. So we'll continue that effort. We have still much to go through this month to be able to get data from enough data sources that we really can start to point to in the implementation plan, adoption efforts that we think would be successful for the county, and funding sources that the county would be able to pursue in order to support those efforts. One of the other big things on the deployment side is the county, through the Golden State Connect Authority and the RCRC, has a local agency technical assistance grant through Tilson Technologies and Utopia. They are, as we understand, finishing kind of their high-level analysis, and will be seeking a meeting later this month with the county and CBG to talk about where they think certain deployment efforts should be focused. They are squarely focused on fiber-to-the-premises infrastructure. And so it'll be interesting to see where they think that could be deployed cost-effectively and then kind of match it with what we're seeing. One of the big things on the CPUC side is that they have finally, just as of last week, revamped their priority area mapping system, completely issued the map, issued the map user guide, and they are encouraging local governments, their consultants, the people that they're working with, providers, to take a look at that map because they're going to award more points as you seek use of the federal funding account money that has been allocated, over $28 million in Lake County's case, and the competitive process to obtain that funding and then roll out services. And that's one of the things that we'll be doing in June, is we'll be working with the county and potential providers. Dick will be out in the county. He'll be meeting with ISPs. He's already talked to a number of them. And we'll be looking at potential partners to work with the county, where the county would provide kind of the public policy goals and the direction, and the possible partners would build the systems and deploy the services and make the best use, take the best advantage of that $28 million to start to fill in some of these gaps. Beyond that, as we indicated, Dick, you want to go to the next slide? As we indicated, you know, we'll be in the stages where we'll finish the information gathering late this month or early June, and then we'll be able to draft the initial master broadband plan update. We'll vet it through the county staff that we're working with, and their stakeholders, and then present a final report, most likely in July, that we come back to the board of supervisors and present. This would lead right into the broadband implementation plan, where we'll really kick it into higher gear in June. That will be ongoing work, working with the latter grant contractor, working based on the information we've found, working regionally with the Upstate California Connect Consortium, working with a number of the stakeholders to really fine-tune and hone an implementation plan, a multi-year plan that would take advantage of the funding that's still coming down the pipe. Ultimately, the goal is to get the capability, the availability for everybody to meet the federal and state standard of 100 slash 100 or higher, and then to be able to have the mechanisms in place where adoption is an issue once availability is there, to be able to support adoption efforts so that you would have ubiquitous broadband throughout the county. It's, it's a, a goal that's substantial, takes a lot of work, a lot of people rowing in the same direction, but it will be achievable, we believe. So that's it for our status update on the update. And we know you probably have a number of questions, so feel free to, we'll open it up for questions.
Did you have anything else?
I don't have anything further to add, but our contractors will look forward to your questions.
Yeah. I really appreciate this update and looking forward to the master plan in July. Do we have questions at this point? Supervisor Spatier?
Appreciate the update. I know I was just recently at a CSAC conference and came back home from that conference with some questions on where we were. I knew that we were kind of not ahead of the game, but we had a master plan already to begin with. We obviously needed to update it, review it, dust it off. I do have some questions as far as, I want to make sure, I think the last time that we met, I discussed the fact that we put together an asset list of our buildings and our water towers and other points of interest to maybe look at some wireless connections using those things. Is that something that you've received and have been able to implement, or is that not useful in this process?
We have been able to map a number of assets. I don't believe that we've received that particular data set, but we can certainly work with Matthew to get it. One of the issues that we're going to have is the state of wireless technologies is such that those that are providing it are having trouble in the upload direction, not so much delivering more than 100 megabits downstream, but being able to deliver it symmetrical. So we do find that the state and the federal government give real priority to wireline, especially fiber optics, to the premise connections. That doesn't mean that we're leaving wireless out. And, you know, one of the things that we're doing is looking at the current wireless providers, because we also know that there's stair steps to being able to do this based on, you know, the cost. So, yeah, we'd be happy to implement that as a layer in the map. Dick will be meeting with some of the wireless providers, looking at their capabilities. One of the things that, that happened, I think since we last talked in December and now, is that, that Etheric, who had, had a very successful platform in some areas of the bay, and especially down in the communities right around the bay, was decertified by the FCC. They were not able to prove to the commission that they were going to be able to meet 100 slash 100 uniformly delivered to residents, right? Residents and businesses. And so there are no longer any Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. We have that layer built in, but there's no longer any awardees that have been certified by the FCC. Starlink is gone. Again, and it's all based on this upload capability, LTD and Etheric. So we are taking into account all the residents and businesses that they were going to serve. And again, we know that, that the latter grant contractor is squarely focused on fiber to the premises. But the technology changes all the time. One of the things that you notice is that T-Mobile has been very aggressive in putting assets in place so that they do have coverage over the broadband service locations within the county. However, they have not been able to prove that they could meet 100 megabits symmetrical on a uniform basis, except in areas where they can put a lot of antenna assets very close together. We're talking about in some cases as close as 100 feet together or 100 feet between each other. So we will be talking with them. We did receive some information from them in another project, which was interesting, and forecast not only enhanced 5G, but 6G at some point. So long story short, or the short answer to your question is, yes, we're still looking at wireless, and, and we haven't received that data set, but we'll be happy to build it in as a layer, because I think there will be a role for wireless going forward.
And I appreciate that. And you answered my other question about the ARDOF, because I knew that I, I've been a part of a couple meetings with, I think it was LTD and Etheric, and was kind of curious where we were because the money had not been released yet. I had no idea that they had been disqualified. I knew Starlink had been disqualified, but that's not good news. That's, that's more hurdles for us to overcome. The 100, 100, in my opinion, is kind of difficult to deliver. It seems more like an urban request than a rural request. Our topography and our, our lack of centralized communities, we were spread out. We're, we're in very remote locations. We're going to have to figure out how to get that, and we're not going to be able to put wired all the way to every single person here. I want to highlight something that I keep getting a no answer, but I'm going to keep highlighting it because I believe in it. Our mountain, Mount Canocti, is an important asset for our law enforcement and first responders in order to have antennas and repeaters throughout the county. I just think that that's a potential asset and opportunity to utilize as well, to reach as much as we can in our entire county. It's not the tallest mountain in the area, but it's definitely a centralized area for a lot of people. So appreciate the, the work that you're doing. I do want to, the timeline that you provided for June, July, do you know how that differs from the timeline from all those who are working in a relationship with RCRC? Is it ahead of their timeline? I'm just trying to figure out how can we kind of beat them to the finish line so when we're looking to get the investments actually done, that we're not competing with the rest of the counties in the state of California?
Right. And, and I know that's, that's a, that's a big issue. I think in the case of the federal funding account, those funds have already been allocated to the county. They can't be reallocated to anybody else. The issue there is who will apply for them? And you could have, when you look at the different priority areas, we're becoming familiar with some of those, which are really on the cusp of the served areas now, right? The easiest to expand to. You could see some competition for those funds. We know in other counties, there will be, say, between AT&amp;T and a cable operator. I think that's less likely in, in Lake County. We think MediaCom may be the most likely to go after them because the latter grant contractor won't be ready with any kind of design by that time, and that would be Tilson and Utopia. Because Utopia, once, you know, sort of embedded in the county and throughout the counties, would be able to go after those funds. They're not, they're not a provider themselves, except the middle mile services, but they do host a number of ISPs and could go in with them. So I think, I think your, bottom line is, I think you're well positioned to be involved in the process, to work with a provider, to go after those $28 million for areas that the county really wants to see built. And I think that will be part of our job. And that, that funding, that portal opens in June. So we're actually sort of wheeling around, and that's one of the reasons we want to meet with the latter grant contractor. We want to work with the county directly. And one of the reasons Dick is going out there in June to meet with MediaCom and others so we can kind of help steer that process. so we can kind of help steer that process, which I think will be very helpful to, you know, getting deployment in the areas that need it and being able to serve the most people for that $28 million. Beyond that, yes, you won't see the bead money flow down through the state, because they've got to go through the same process that they did with the ARPA funds, is they've got to figure out how to allocate them. Much of this is dependent on the state's middle mile, and remember they get to build it, but you are, Lake County is one of the first, I believe, 15 segments to be built, 15 or 18 segments to be built of the state middle mile statewide. That will give you a leg up, because that middle mile is critical to be able to expand last mile from that, because the provider won't have to build that middle mile, it'll be there for them. So you will be well positioned, because that funding won't be available, we don't believe, until, to the localities until 2024. And all of this will be done by that time. You'll have the master plan update, you'll have our implementation plan, and we'll actually be then working with you on the next phases of that, which are continuing to seek funding.
Thank you for that. And my last question is actually for our supervisors here, and maybe also for you, Tom. I see here that you're meeting with Lake EDC, you're meeting with the cities. I'm going to assume that our tribal partners also have access to resources for broadband. Are we working together as a whole entire group in Lake County to see how to best manage the deployment of new broadband? Just kind of wanted to check in to see if that's happening.
Yeah, from our perspective, yes, we're really just at the beginning of that effort. In fact, I see that Terry Lodgeston is on the Zoom, and one of our key contacts, and Matthew's already made that introduction. That's one of our next steps. Also, we understand that meeting with the EDC, that the tribal health organization is part of that, and we're going to ask the board members to help us distribute some pretty well-targeted organizational surveys that will allow representative organizations to feed us back information on what their business is, what their constituents are finding. And that process will start next week, right after the EDC meeting, EDC board meeting. So, yes, we are moving in that direction and expect to be much farther along by the end of this month on that process, working with the tribal and other organizations.
Did you want to respond?
Michael, that is a thing I've heard.
Okay.
You know, thank you for that. Obviously, thank you, Bruno, too, because thinking the same thing. You know, I know I can't speak for all seven tribal nations, but there is a similar path that we are all on with broadband through NTAI, FCC, working with the state also. So there are seven tribal nations here in Lake County. If you could reach out directly, it'd be greatly appreciated. Tribal health is an organization that we're all part of, but you can find each and every one of our websites, I think, online. Can reach out there for some consultation. There is a lot of work right in step with what's happening here in the county, at the tribal organizations, for both fiber microwave systems, and the dollars are starting to flow. So if we can coordinate all of that, hopefully we can bring all the dollars and maximize both the federal and the state dollars coming into Lake County as we build these systems out. Because we have been applying, at least for the last couple of years, and being prepared just like Lake County is, with an overall plan to really intensify the broadband capabilities in Lake County. And not just for our tribes, as we always do. We look at our surrounding communities, study the gaps. I'm learning a whole bunch in the internet or broadband conversation, but hopefully we can coordinate all those efforts and just bring more light to Lake County as all government organizations, including the cities and the counties. So I know what's happening. I can't speak for the other side of the lake, but I do know we're all having similar conversations, because I see them on the consultation meetings that are happening at the federal level.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
We'll definitely do that. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the information. Just want to clarify, from my understanding, 100-100, I get that's the goal, and maybe that is the definition of broadband, but that's a big lift. And we are a rural county where some of these lesser technologies that may not qualify as broadband, quote unquote, under the federal funding, may actually still serve as improvements, vast improvements over existing internet in our areas. So I just wanted the briefest of brief introductions, how 100-100, where they identified what you did too, the difference in lift in this evolving technology between upload and download speeds, but I'm just trying to justify in my own mind that we need 100-100 in the farthest, farthest reaches of our county. To what end? You know, so we can upload TikTok videos more efficiently, or if we have unmet needs, that 100-100 is absolutely the bottom line that we need to establish in those far-flung areas? So is there a brief, briefest of brief explanations you can share how the federal government reached that lofty goal and attached so much funding to it?
Sure, yeah. And I think part of the plan update will be explaining the applications that 100-100 will provide. And really, even for just one sort of aside, for community anchor institutions, the goal and the requirement for funding, you know, to serve libraries, government institutions, educational institutions, is a gigabit symmetrical. There, it's pretty intuitive, because you've got, you know, in each school, you know, hundreds of students, you know, in libraries, you've got a number of people trying to access the internet as well as the internal operations, same with government facilities. So there is a real need for symmetrical communication. The NTIA believes that that is the future of communications, is that we'll be doing many things online, and that that will require a much stronger upload capability, communications out from the house, communications out from small businesses. And that could be, you know, anything from running a business at home to telecommuting, that telecommuting in a world where we're dealing with, you know, higher capacity, graphic requirements, and we're using GIS systems at home, you know, we're automating our homes. But one of the biggest drivers, which is really, you know, kind of intuitive when you think about it too, is that, you know, all the younger generations are electronic savvy, and it's not so much from, you know, TikTok and gaming and those kind of things, but it's from the work that they do, you know, whether they're students, whether they're working from home, you know, even in the beginning of their careers. The fact that everybody's sharing the same capacity going into the house, right? So it even puts, you know, a, what's the word? It puts a real focus on increasing the download. For example, MediaCom is positioned to go from, it currently has well more than 100 in the download capability. Its problem is the upload capability, and it has to do some reconfiguration in system, but a lot of it's going to be software-based, based on the new DOCSIS standard, that's the term for it in the cable world, which will enable that 100 megabits upstream. But they may still provide, you know, two gigabits in the downstream direction, because of all the people sharing from any particular home location. So I think that's the focus of the NTIA, is they see more communications coming from the house. And we do know, for example, that in cases where people are teleworking, they've often had to, especially when, because it's a contention-based service, I mean, you've all heard, you know, when kids come home, how in a cable modem-based world, you know, you can't do the work that you did, because everything slows down, right? Well, the thought is too, that as you're upgrading this capacity, you'll overcome those blocks as well. And so the upstream capacity, it may never, it may never reach the levels of the download capacity needed, but it's certainly more than 35 megabits, which is about what cable can achieve right now.
Well, I think you bring up an excellent point. And of course, the question is, what's enough and what is going to survive the immediate future of the next few years? I think in the past, some of the money that's been spent from the federal level financed technologies that were just fine right now, but two or three years from then, all of a sudden, they're really not that good anymore. So that's the question, is how much is enough? How much is more than what we need? And I'm not sure anybody has that, you know, crystal ball to be able to answer that. Ultimately, I do think that wireless will have a place to the exact locations that you're talking about, three miles off the road kind of stuff and whatnot. That will be, there will be a place for that.
Thank you. And the goal is that we have equity across our county for those that live in incorporated areas and the rural areas. We have large businesses way off the beaten path that had no access. Now, we have home businesses tucked way up in the forest, so it's important to have this equity. Do we have, if we don't have any more comments from the board, I'm wondering...
Just, I know that Supervisor Simon had mentioned about the Native American communities. In District 3, I've reached out to some of the tribes there. They're already involved. I tried to connect them with Pat Blacklock, and they said they're involved. So they're doing basically their own work to obtain that, so.
So do we have anybody in the public who wishes to comment? Chief Duncan?
Good afternoon. Sorry to get in the way of lunch. So, to Paul Duncan, Cal Fire, South Lake County Fire, redundancy and hardening. So a big factor for emergency services, being able to access internet connectivity. We have one fiber feed that comes in the county, and if it's impacted to MediaCom, we lose broadband throughout the county. So when we're working on this, and I appreciate all the contractors' work with this, something that's important to us is maintaining that connection and having a back, a pathway that in event one feed is impacted, that we have the ability to connect in those emergencies. So hardening is the other part. So any communication infrastructure should be hardened around it, because there's a potential for fire to impact just about anywhere around here. So if we're not preparing those sites and those lines, that we're setting us up for failure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good point. Do we have anyone else in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
Nothing in the Zoom.
Okay. This is it. Did you have one more?
Just one final comment. I believe we have two fiber feeds, because I thought that the K through 12 has access to one, and the colleges have access to a different one, because right in the city of Clear Lake, right next to KEC and Woodland, they're like 100 feet apart. And I want to make sure that this group here knows about that potential, because if we can make a connection between the two fiber feeds, because I know I've been involved in that conversation between Canuckti Unified and Woodland Community College, that would create a lot of the redundancy that we may need, and it may be as simple as just a little bit of undergrounding work in that area. I don't know, but that's part of conversations that I've been involved in the past, but I don't believe that connection's ever been made.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming today. We look forward to coming back in the very short, near term.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item, our 6.12 item, 11:15 a.m., consideration of Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Community Update. Matthew?
Yes, I'm presenting this item as well. Thank you again. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. Residents from Lake County's richly diverse communities watched on Tuesday, February 23, 2021, as your board unanimously proclaimed promoting tolerance, respect, equity, and inclusion among your utmost priorities. And you'll recall, that historic moment culminated significant grassroots efforts by a community call to action and other local groups, and was punctuated by each supervisor reading a portion of the proclamation, collectively affirming your board's commitment to host at least one community visioning forum to unearth priorities in the following categories: meaningful actions and activities that will build bridges where there may be walls, fostering tolerance, respect, understanding, equity, and inclusion, promoting nonviolence and nonviolent conflict resolution, focusing resources on underlying causes and conditions that lead to inequitable resource and justice distribution, and relevant solutions for any social injustices as they may come to light. In the time since that proclamation, community members and leaders from the County of Lake, cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake, and tribal governments that resonated with your board's proclamation volunteered to be part of a planning effort to bring these community fora to life, and that became the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee. In total, dozens of county residents have contributed to planning efforts, and staff appreciates the invaluable leadership that Supervisors Crandall and Green, and former Supervisor Tina Scott, and Supervisor Piska as well, have brought to this process over the life of this work. And also, thanks to the generous financial partnership of the County of Lake and cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, Nicole Anderson and Associates LLC is currently facilitating a series of public fora entitled, quote, "Honoring All Voices." Our first forum was held Monday, April 24, and the Facebook Live stream post for that first event has reached 1,243 people in total. And viewership on YouTube was similar to that for your board's meetings. The 40 to 50 people that were there in person and on Zoom Live were also highly engaged and were grateful to all that have participated, whether that participation was in real time or in the days since. You will be aware, the next public forum will be held Monday, May 15, which is from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Robinson Ranch Ria Resort and Casino. And you'll also be aware, May 15 is the anniversary date of the Bloody Island massacre, and that was the reason for selection of that site for this particular event. Virtual and in-person participation are again expected to be available, and members of the public are encouraged to visit lakecountyca.gov and search Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee to find links to register for that event. And there's also a press release for the Honoring All Voices forum posted right on the homepage of the county website. Also has access to the links for registration and other information. The third forum will be held Monday, June 5, and that's expected to be in the city of Clear Lake. Details for that event will be announced in the coming days. So wanted to just present that update. Very much appreciate your board's support of this effort thus far, and grateful to have had a successful first event.
Thank you, Matthew. Did you want to add anything, Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, no, the first meeting went really well. Everybody was engaged. We had three tables, and then I think three tables here where we worked in work groups, and then there was two or three online. I think there was three, right? Two groups. Yes, and so actively engaged, you know, the two hours, two and a half hours went by really fast. Just all of the questions, all of the work, everybody had a chance to speak on their experiences, whether, from ethnicity or whether not, but also being really engaged and learning about each other. And it was very beneficial to have those discussions, whether they be comfortable or uncomfortable, at least people were having the opportunity to understand each other. And I really enjoyed it, and I'm going to enjoy the next one, next Monday, so.
Supervisor Spatier?
Yes, thank you very much for all the work that's been put into this. What I'd like to ask, I know May 15 is kind of, I'd like to see it possibly as the end of step one, rather than just, you know, we're done with the visioning forums, like my question is, what next? And I'd like to bring the conversation back here to know, what are we doing when it comes to equity? Are we, I've argued this with the state many a times, they talk about equity all the time, but they don't actually do it. Why does Lake County receive 1% of its sales tax when Santa Barbara County also receives 1% of its sales tax? Where's the equity in that? We need more help to be able to lift the bottom, and that's what equity is all about. And similarly, what does our equity look like around the lake? Where does more help need to be provided in certain areas? There's got to be a way to kind of do a score sheet. And anyways, I'd love to see what the next steps are, because I think internally, we're the ones to lead that example. Love the conversation with the community. I think those conversations actually should keep continuing. Those are important conversations. But I'd love to know, what are we doing and what is our focus as far as creating equity within Lake County as a whole?
As an immediate question, I can only say that these fora are the events that were intended to gather the community feedback that will become the basis for those next steps. And our contractors and probably members of the committee as well, I'm sure, will be here and, you know, provide what those recommendations were, what the feedback was received, and we'll definitely work with your board. received, and will definitely work with your board to take those next steps. And you'll probably recall that your board's action thus far has been, or your board's direction, rather, has been limited to the planning of these fora. So the committee, as it stands right now, doesn't have any direction or mandate beyond this immediate step. So one of those next step actions could be, for example, establishing a group that would be, you know, working on some of these topics on a more ongoing basis. But that step in terms of that direction has not been provided to date. So just hope that helps clarify.
I know that there was also a discussion during, among a few of the participants, that they recognized in other counties that they were, they had basically like an ad hoc committee for equity, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I'm not sure if that's the route we're going, but I know that, I'm pretty sure Mendocino County does it as well. I don't know about Sonoma, but the reason why they formed these groups is so that they can meet about any policy that's written or meet about any situation and recommend to the board in an advisory capacity. So I just wanted to mention that as well. I know that Joanne Cicado has been an intricate motivation for this, especially from our proclamation, and then Supervisor Sabatier recommending that we put action towards, towards this proclamation as well. So we are, I think we're on the right path, and I appreciate the work that we're doing with Nicole, so.
And so you'll be coming back with recommendations from the group?
More than likely, yeah.
Great. Do we have anybody from the chambers who wishes to comment on this? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay. Thank you so much, Matthew. Okay, I, we're going to power through a couple of more things here. Our 6.13 item, 9:30 a.m., consideration of Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council project requests and prior allocation of discretionary cannabis tax funds. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Just picking up where former Supervisor Scott left off. Shortly before she left office, she did provide instruction to staff to allocate $165,000 in funds to a Water Resources budget unit for the purpose of initiating a brush clearing project along a, what was then termed as about a three-mile section of Scotts Creek that was prone to periodic flooding. And certainly, the, this winter, provided ample evidence of how and when flooding occurs within Scotts Valley. But other than the allocation, there was not a formal work plan, and that was not brought to your board for discussion or approval of the expenditure of that level of discretionary cannabis tax funds. Early scoping work by Water Resources and then additional inquiries that I made highlighted several areas of concern with the project. As it was originally proposed, number one, the original ballot budget allocation would have come nowhere close to covering three miles of brush clearing. It would scale back to about a half mile, included no sediment removal, as was originally requested as well. And perhaps most importantly, the bulk of the work would have occurred on private property, so we would have had to demonstrate a nexus for the public benefit and also negotiate access to several of those properties, many of which were uninhabited and have landowners outside the county. So there were some problems with the initial approach. So on April 24, Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council met and considered some project alternatives that were suggested by Water Resources that would basically take the same allocation but maybe pivot it in more of a generally beneficial direction. We identified three project alternatives. The most urgent in my mind is, number one, the hydrological survey of surface water movements, both at baseline conditions but also in high-flow years like this year when we had the atmospheric river. If we have a hydrological survey, then maybe we can discuss certain site-specific flood protection measures, but without that baseline data, it's almost impossible to figure out where to start in a long and very flashy floodplain like Scotts Valley has. Second one, aerial electromagnetic groundwater survey. We have previously put in a request with Congressman Thompson to do a larger AEM survey on multiple watersheds. But the thought is, if we can at least get the ball rolling in Scotts Valley, we could prove a cost share if we did get congressional funding. And if congressional funding didn't happen, we would still accomplish some survey of groundwater, which is a key concern in Scotts Valley for the current council members, the former council members, and just people out there in general. And lastly, stream flow monitoring, as was also proven during the atmospheric river event. Tensions run high when the river is running high and definitely have a mix of older levees and stuff like that. So people do want to know what's happening in a very real-time way during flood conditions. Also, for the Clear Lake hitch recovery effort, having real-time stream flow measurements can really help us identify key areas of concern, including some of the tributaries like Hendricks Creek, where the hitch were running this year. So basically, all of these project alternatives benefit the Scotts Valley community as a whole. I did want to honor Supervisor Scott's original commitment to fund some of this work in Scotts Valley, and I appreciate the work of the Scotts Valley Advisory Council on being open to discussing some alternatives for that funding. But bottom line, before we can take next steps and direct Water Resources to develop a work plan and something like that, I thought appropriate to bring this to the board so we could all discuss it and give that direction if indicated. And if you wanted to throw some other ideas out there, I'm certainly open to hearing that as well.
Okay. Do we have Director DeLeon on?
He's on.
Okay, great.
Yes, good morning, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I was just wondering if you had anything to follow up with this?
No, the summary that Supervisor Green put together is spot on. We, we here in the department support the changes and appreciate that the Scotts Valley Council agreed with that. I think these are, they're all very good projects, and I think some good things could come from them, so we support this.
Great. Is your pen up? Supervisor Sabatier?
I can wait till other pens are up.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll just make a statement and then a question. First statement is, I really believe this process has been absolutely not the appropriate Board of Supervisors should not have the ability to allocate $165,000 to a specific project without bringing it to the board. That has not occurred. If it did occur, it never spoke to the discretionary funds that are allocated to the Board of Supervisors. So I think we need to watch our policy with cannabis taxes. The people voted on that. The people need to know what we're spending it on, not putting it in someplace where then it, we don't even know where it is. So I think it's something we need to review and tighten our policy. I think it's good to be transparent. This was, in my opinion, not the right appropriate process that one single supervisor should be able to do. I appreciate Supervisor Green bringing this back so that we can discuss it, but my question is, which one is what you believe or Water Resources believe is the most appropriate of the three to move forward with? Because I don't believe you're asking all three. I think you're asking, which one do we want to move forward with?
I am asking for all three.
You are asking for all three.
I am asking for all three.
Is 165 able to carry all three?
My guess is not. If you do the inflow monitoring, there may be a little supplement needed, but they haven't crunched the numbers yet. So basically, I'm just trying to get the authorization for them to crunch the numbers, do the work plan, and bring something back again for further board discussion and approval. I think the inflow monitoring may push it slightly over but not substantially over. And I initially thought putting another 35 on this just to get it up to 200, but I think all of these three are well within the realm of reason, and if they do hit certain hiccups, you know, I hope staff, we could give direction today. You know, obviously, we want to bring a work plan not to exceed this original allocation, but the most important thing is bring us good shovel-ready projects that we can talk about. And if this particular budget transfer is not totally sufficient to do it, I'm open to discussion about whatever little extra it might take us to get over the hump.
Okay. I apologize for that misunderstanding. My next question is, you've limited it from three miles to something much smaller. What's the situation with the private properties in the sense, is all of the work involving private properties or only partial?
I'll have to defer to staff on that, and I know Mr. Fox worked on it briefly, but basically, you know, maybe possibly some public rights away near Eichoff Bridge itself, but I would say the bulk of the work was planned on private properties along the creek, along some old levee channels that are not county-maintained. And again, one of the big reasons I wanted to re-scope this and reboot the dialogue was, could not prove any nexus, knew this brush was going to grow back, knew it was primarily going to benefit private landowners, and that could have forced us into precedent, a very expensive precedent. Even if we agreed that hydrological need was specific here, I have 10 miles plus a creek frontage there. So how do I pick this three miles or actually this half mile? And again, brush clearing is just half of it. The original ask of the council included sediment removal. I do want to signal that this is a very key concern for probably all of our districts is, you know, what's happening on our streams, waterways. At the mouth of the stream, we have sediment piles that need to get dredged. Whether it's the county or the private landowner, clearly, we have, the pendulum has swung from when they used to bring D4s in there and just dredge out the whole creek and everyone was happy to, the rules changed thankfully, but now nobody does anything, and there's no dredging at all in some of these hitch-bearing streams. So these are bigger, these are bigger picture questions, I think, we all need to be asking. So again, I just want to be true to the original allocation to the extent it's permissible, and I think it was at least permissible to throw, listen to your advisory council and try to put something on there that they supported. But, you know, we do have bigger discussions to have. I, you know, I do think, for example, we could talk about brush clearing where public rights away are very clearly evident and where the public benefit of periodic brush clearing is present, but even that modest step would be very expensive. So we've got to, if we're going to be talking about stuff like that, we have to kind of all come to the table and think about what we can do, what we want to do, and more importantly, what we can afford to do. And for all the best wishes that went with this original proposal, as they started kicking the tires on it, they said, wow, that just is not going to come anywhere close to what we need to brush clear three miles of creek.
And so just my final comment, I don't know at what point county council needs to be involved, but if there's public resources provided to private individuals or private properties, which is an issue, I want to make sure that we can understand if that's going to be a line we cross prior to asking Water Resources to go too far. I don't know at what point they'll know if they go too far, but I just want to make sure that that we're dealing with county council to make sure of that.
Well, and the request is to direct staff, and so it says Water Resources staff, but I'm sure they'll be working in collaboration with county council to make sure that everything is going to be worked out appropriately. Any other comments? Any from the public? Any in Zoom?
No.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the board, and we're directing staff. Is this consensus? Consensus?
It is by consensus.
Okay. You have agreement?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Okay. Do we have time for 7.2? Should be pretty quick. Matthew? Consideration of one-time dedication of 1% of local assistance and tribal consistency funding that LATCF, $30 million, no, I'm sorry, $30,000. I'm getting hungry. $30,607.51 to support establishment of a national center for public lands counties.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska. This is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer, once again. As your board will be aware, in April, Supervisors Pyska, Sabatier, and I collectively represented the County of Lake at the California State Association of Counties' 2023 Legislative Conference. And during this conference, Supervisor Pyska and I attended a Rural Caucus meeting. Mono County's Vice Chair and District Four Supervisor John Peters presented a request on behalf of the National Association of Counties that we consider a one-time dedication of 1% of local assistance and tribal consistency funding toward establishment of a national center for public lands counties. Lake County's total allocation under that funding stream was $360,750.78. So 1% is $30,607.51. Sorry. And that's $30,607.51. Members of your board will be aware, Supervisor Peters serves as CSAC's delegate to the National Association of Counties' Western Interstate Region Board, and that group represents 15 western states on an array of priorities, including public land use and conservation. The WIR Board has ongoing concern that gaps in information regarding the benefits and impacts of public lands on counties has affected the long-term stability of multiple federal funding streams, including payments in lieu of taxes or PILT, which are made in consideration of federal lands' tax-exempt status. The National Center for Public Lands Counties will be a research institution, and filling those information gaps will be its kind of primary focus. Its purpose will be to advance the policy and practice, study, research, and learning networks for America's public lands counties, and it will seek to improve understanding among policymakers of unique issues facing counties with federal public lands, in part by developing case studies, public fora, and learning networks to inform effective policy at all levels of government. The center, which will be associated with the NACO Research Foundation and co-governed with the Western Interstate Region Leadership, will also foster intergovernmental relationships and dialogue on topics such as landscape health, wildfire risk mitigation, watershed protection, economic competitiveness, job creation, enhanced public access to federal lands and waters, species management, and biodiversity health. Your board will be aware, there are over 400,000 acres, which is approximately 630 square miles, of total public lands within Lake County's geographic borders, and this constitutes approximately half of our landmass. So we do share concerns with other counties that are engaged in this process, certainly. Chair Pyska, Supervisor Sabatier, and staff recommend that your board approve this commitment and authorize Chair Pyska to sign the letter of commitment that was attached to your board's agenda on behalf of your board. And also, one minor note, and Johanna, if you can project it, project the letter at this time. While the language is unaltered, the letter of commitment will be on Board of Supervisors' letterhead and not Supervisor Pyska's letterhead, as was attached to the agenda initially. My apologies for that error, and we look forward to your board's feedback.
Thank you. Very thorough explanation. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just I noted, and in the recommended action you mentioned, we want the motion to reflect that we're authorizing the chair to sign. So I just went off the staff report, didn't see that. You mentioned it, wanted to mention that.
Anything from the public? Anybody in Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further. Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter of commitment to a one-time dedication of 1% of LATCF funding for the amount of $30,607.51 to support establishment of a national center for public lands counties and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will take up Item 7.3, consideration of the following advisory board appointment, the Lower Lake Cemetery District, Michael Dean.
Yep. I am good with Michael Dean being on the Lower Lake Cemetery District.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Anybody in Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Michael Dean to the Lower Lake Cemetery District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, aye, sorry.
So we're finished with our regular timed and untimed items. We have a few pulled items, and then we have interviews this afternoon. So how would you like to proceed?
I would recommend taking a luncheon, try to knock out as many of the pulled items before 2 o'clock.
Before 2 o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so come back at 1:30, and we'll try and get those done quickly when we return. All right, thank you so much. Okay, welcome back. We have some items that were pulled that we're going to get to before our closed session. We have some items that were pulled that we're going to get to before our closed session. is approve the contract between Tyler Recording and County of Lake for a five-year contract in the amount of $84,756 initial and $41,256 annually thereafter, and authorize the chair to sign. And we have our assessor, Rich Ford.
So the mechanics of the reason it was pulled was because it was authorizing the chair to sign. The way the contract's written and the way it was reviewed and basically gone through the cycle with Anita before she left, the signature page only shows myself as the recorder, and then, of course, Tyler. And so we cannot have the authorize the chair to sign because there's no signature section. So I need to authorize the recorder to sign on behalf of Lake County for the contract, and that's pretty much the only difference why it got pulled.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Anybody in the Zoom room?
Nobody in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve contract between Tyler Recording and County of Lake for a five-year contract in the amount of $84,756 initially and $41,256 annually thereafter, and authorize the assessor recorder, choose one, to sign on behalf of Lake County.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item is 5.11. Thank you to everyone who's been hanging around all day for this. Second reading, adopt ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to exempt agricultural building permitting for temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation. We have Community Development Director Turner.
Thank you. Thank you for pulling this item from consent. We just have two small things to note. First is a non-substantive change. This was basic wordsmithing and consistency wording through the document. That would be 6.25.2.A. Changing, it reads currently, "An exempt agricultural building permit for a temporary hoop structure for commercial cannabis shall be issued if all the following requirements are met." We are just requesting the switch out of "if all the following requirements are met" to be changed to "subject to the following." That is consistent, then, with where it's listed earlier in the permit. Secondly, there was discussion last week regarding the fire access road, and I just wanted to make a one small point of clarification for the board. There was discussion about our permites and applicants and the projects being exempt from the 4290 and 4291 standards, and there was a little bit of reference that those would apply to the fire access roads. So I just wanted to make it very clear, the board doesn't need to take any additional action on this one, but this is for the public at prospective applicants and permites, that the requirement of a distance of no more than 150 feet from an approved fire access road comes from a separate section of the code. It comes from the California Fire Code, Section 503.1.1. And so this section of the code does not offer an exemption for agricultural projects. So the, also, we do have chief, fire chiefs from, where are we, Cal Fire and South Lake County Fire Districts present. Should you have further questions? And we are working, actually, now, the outside of this to sort of help the industry to understand what that could look like and what options. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier.
So just one change and then just an explanation?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to check in. So there is one portion, and I had it, that I moved to follow where you were, and I've lost it. It's Part C on number one. So one, which is permit, and then Part C. It starts with
What line are you at?
Okay, line between 10 and 11 on page two. I believe that's page two, yes. Where it says, "In addition to those conducting agricultural operations," just want to make sure that that's the appropriate language.
Thank you. This section was included when the permits were applicable to all ag. I didn't offer or didn't recommend striking it because I'm a little adverse to making substantive changes at this point, since we've had a number of first readings. However, I would defer to county council regarding its, the purpose that it might still serve, if any, and if they would recommend removal.
And if I can explain at least what my potential issue is, I know that we had a conversation, and ag did not review it for what its impacts on ag is. I know the main draft is for cannabis cultivation, but at the same time, it seems to bring in ag all of a sudden in the middle of it. And I just want to make sure if we're creating regulations for an industry, I want to hear from that industry to see what the impacts could possibly be, rather than just looking to see if that would impact them. So that was my reason for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to hear from county council on that.
Okay.
So if the proposal is to delete the clause under Section, Sub C, in addition, the clause in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, that may be construed as a substantive change under the Government Code Section, which the option would be to could have this matter continued for another week because that Government Code Section does require at least five days for a second reading to take place before the ordinance is adopted. And so that would be one option for the board to take. And I'm looking at, it's based on Government Code Section 25131.
Additionally, should the board prefer to have this removed? This is the only place where it does cite that it is allowed within the approved cultivation area, so that part of it would need to be put elsewhere.
My suggestion was just get rid of that first clause of "in addition to those conducting agricultural operations" and just start that Part C from applicants. Because I think that can work by just striking the first part of that comment and saying applicants with an approved cannabis cultivation permit from the County of Lake are eligible to apply for an exempt agriculture building permit for temporary hoop structures for commercial cannabis within the approved cultivation area. That seems
Yeah, so under Government Code Section 25131, for, on the second instances where there is a second reading of the ordinance, only changes made based on typographical errors, clerical errors, clerical changes can only be made in order to proceed through with the adoption of the ordinance at the second reading. However, in looking at the other ordinances from other counties, some of them, as far as the second reading of the ordinance is concerned, they have, there have been instances where it was based, the clerical change would be based on whether or not the issue itself was discussed during the first reading or in prior drafts of the ordinance prior to amendment. So arguably, this might fall under that category. But with, you know, the safest bet at this point, because it is, it does deal with the substance that even in spite of it being discussed in prior instances where the board has, where the board has discussed about, references made to agricultural, at the time of the first reading, there were specific amendments that were made, and this was not one of them. And so in that sense, you know, it may be safer, if your board wishes to do so, to just put this off or have this continue for one week with specific changes to be made, then we can proceed with, you know, the following, on the following meeting, continued date meeting for the adoption of the ordinance as, you know, after the amendments and changes are made.
What? Go ahead.
So the timeline's not what I'm worried about. I was just wondering if that wordage, if all we did was take the clause out and remain, the rest remains, if that would work. But I guess I have also a second question. If we leave it as is, does it open up a potential Pandora's Box where we're also creating regulation for an industry that has not provided their feedback to us? Or is that going to be seen as a strange situation where the ordinance is for cannabis cultivation, hoop houses, temporary structures, where it accidentally says as well as agriculture in the middle of it? Does that open up that box, or do they not have any access to that and it doesn't impact them?
Because there is that ambiguity by leaving that clause in there, and it does make reference to conducting agricultural operations, the rule of thumb generally is to make the ordinance be as internally consistent and clear as possible. So I do, I do see a potential issue with leaving these in, leaving this in, and since it's under Sub C, it is a requirement under the introductory paragraph of 6.25 on page one of that ordinance. So put it another way, there may be some potential interpretation issues if that clause were to be left in there.
Then I would prefer to see that cleaned up, even if it takes an extra week.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate moving with caution. I'm reading that as declarative of existing law. If you ended that sentence that at ag exempt agricultural building permit, for example, it'd be super clear that traditional ag can apply for an ag exempt agricultural building permit. This would clarify that also applicants with an approved cannabis permit could do so. I suspect we're going to come back in a week anyway, but not for reasons of this clause. So I'm interested in hearing from the folks in the audience about any proposed changes they have. I'm okay with this as is. I'm okay if you want to bring it back a week later to clean it up.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification on, you know, the cleanest way to do it, but if we go back to our conversation we had last week, I thought that we had a consensus that we were going to remove that from this ordinance. I mean, I didn't watch it today, but I know we had plenty of long conversation, and one of the, you know, larger sticking points was making sure that anything we're doing here isn't going to be applicable to, you know, our conventional ag at that point. So our discussions last week will not cover it. What you're saying is that the cleanest way is to bring it back and remove it. So that would be my request, too. I'd rather not do another week, but
And that would be the suggestion as an option that your board may take, only because at the previous meeting on this item, certain specific amendments were made, line items, if you will, of certain sections that were specifically changed, and this was not, this was not a part of it under Sub C. And so to, when we talk about the cleanest way or the most streamlined way to handle or approach this, in order to avoid any potential interpretational issues, that would be the one option, is to clean, do a cleanup provision on this subsection, and in any other possible amendments that may come up, and then come back on Tuesday. It is consistent with what the board had discussed, previously discussed last Tuesday as far as excluding the ag component of it. The only the only potential issue that may arise if this ordinance, as it is, is adopted, would be, you know, certain interpretations coming out of that previous Tuesday meeting wherein specific amendments were made, but not, but no amendments as to this part, and that may be construed or at least interpreted as, as a possible exception to what the board intended at the Tuesday meeting, which is to have this be, pertain to just cannabis and not other forms of agriculture.
I could just add a little bit. We do not anticipate having our door beaten down by non-cannabis ag looking for exempt hoop structures. We haven't had any demand prior. Additionally, in the, it says eight times in this ordinance that it is for commercial cannabis. That was per board direction over the last two first readings, that it be specific to commercial cannabis. One last thing, what part of the required application in number four is that the, the dates of usage is included, plans for removal, and adherence to applicable state statutes, regulations, guidelines, and the Department of Cannabis Control Regulations for temporary hoop structures for cultivation? So totally defer to the board for how you'd like to get it done. We don't anticipate an issue.
Okay.
If we struck the introductory clause on that subdivision, and in so doing, we cited the fact we talked about this at length, and we do have eight sites limiting this ordinance to commercial cannabis, striking that introductory clause, absent any other substantive changes, would striking that clause with the context from the prior hearings be a substantive change?
In looking at the other ordinances that have been passed, say, in other counties, and in looking at the issue that other counties have faced regarding the second readings of ordinance and any changes and amendments that have taken place, the answer to that is arguably, some counties have taken the position that if it was discussed by the board supervisors at the first reading of the ordinance, if the particular issue was discussed, then it would count. Some counties have determined that it has, that it does consist, that the amendments to make it consistent with the board's intent and discussion at the first reading would count as a clerical change. And to make, and also for purposes of making it internally consistent with the ordinance. So there is certainly an argument there. Other counties have taken what I would, what they've called the quote-unquote "safer route" in saying, in taking the position that typographical errors and clerical corrections under that Government Code Section for purposes of a second reading would only consist of misspellings, certain things that were left out, that to make it, again, internally consistent with, say, some of the exhibits that were attached to the, to the ordinance, and they stopped there and nothing further. So you do have, because the Government Code Section, there's not a lot of extensive case law discussion regarding what would count as, as a substantive amendment or as a type, typographical errors are clear enough, but when it comes to clerical changes, clerical errors, that's where the ambiguity lies. So the answer, again, just to sum, to sew up, is there is an argument there. And so the, there is an argument for, for this not counting as a clerical change, or this not counting as a substantive change so that it would be clerical error, for purposes of making it internally consistent, especially in light of the board's prior discussion. The, there is still that potential risk, of course, that somebody would come in and interpret that clause to open the door of sorts, and it would hinge in part with how one would interpret the clause in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, either as declarative, or either actually as a requirement, or as a precondition to Sub C, which would make it substantive under that argument.
Supervisor Krendel?
Okay, so I have a question about the Sub C. Morea, what agricultural operations would require an exempt structure, traditional ag?
The requirement for a structure, be it permanent or temporary, is either a building permit, actually, it is a building permit. And so this is just giving an option for exempt, an exempt structure. So this would be bypassing the building permit, which would require engineered plans and an inspection, or at least one inspection. So this would, there is nothing that requires exempt
of exempt ag structures for barns, farming that needs barns, or in this new instance, farming that would require or that could benefit from temporary hoop structures.
That's, that's, that's what my next question was. Wouldn't it, it doesn't negatively affect agriculture? I mean, am I reading it wrong?
No, it does not negatively affect. And in fact, in last week's discussion, the board did specify that this was for agricultural, temporary agricultural structures over five feet in height. And the purpose of that, through that discussion, was to exempt maybe the strawberry covers and the smaller covers, but rather focus on those structures that are between five and 12 feet in height.
All right, thanks.
Okay, I will open it up to the public now. Do we have anybody in the chambers?
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. I hope to make this a little bit simpler of a decision because I'm going to ask you to continue.
Can you give your name, please?
Yeah, this is Sarah Bodnar. I'm the Policy Director for LCCA. And I am going to ask that you continue this with one tiny change. We've had a chance to talk today, Fire and I, as we've been hanging out here. And we understand, you know, collectively as an industry, that this is about farming safely and that we're not all going to agree on every single detail. But it is super important that we have regulations this year. So I want to modify the letter that we submitted and just narrow it to one request, which was item one. With the consideration of needing to be within 150 feet of the fire road for safe access at the end of your hoops, we'd like to simply request that the hoops can be 150 feet long instead of 100. And kind of acquiesce to the other request of keeping three feet between each hoop right now. It doesn't seem like people are comfortable with that. And although it's done in other counties, we need to get hoops this year. So instead of removing the three-foot distance, LCCA would like to request that hoops can simply be 150 feet in length, because that will give us more efficiency than keeping them at 100. So for Section 2A2, changing that maximum length to 150 and remove the square footage of limit of 2,000 feet for each hoop because they would be longer. And if we could make that change and the other change to clean up the ordinance and move this forward to next week, we'd be happy for this season. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. We're here again. Good morning and good afternoon. So yeah, we, on behalf of the Fire Chiefs, we'd really appreciate, you know, that we, we try to follow that 503-1-1 so that, you know, the three-foot clearance, when we had these original discussions, they were 10-foot apart. We agreed to go three-foot, gives us access in between the hoop houses. And then on, on majority of our engines, our crosslaser is set at 200 foot. So having that max of 150 foot and having an access road, it gives us the ability to get additional resources in between, whether it be a rescue, an ambulance, an engine or whatever it needs. So it would really appreciate the support of maintaining that within the ordinance. And really, it's all life safety components that we really want to make sure the farming is safe. In those hoop houses, we can look at 150% humidity with the heat. And so there's a good probability for somebody to sustain a heat-related environmental emergency. So, thank you. I was under three minutes.
You had one minute. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
It sounded like there was not a opposition to changing that to 150 feet. It sounds like there's two different groups in this room that are in concurrence of what can be changed. So I'm okay with that. I am, I am willing to say that, I, I would like to see it changed, but I would like to say that we had enough of a conversation that we requested to take the traditional ag completely out of this version that we have in front of us today. And I'm comfortable enough to say that we can make that change. But then again, it requires another week with the changes we would be making. So I would request that we make both changes. I apologize for that. But I do want to bring up something that somebody told me last week, actually, one of our staff members who was just in here earlier this morning. There was the idea of it's hard to find people inside a hoop house, it's hard to see over it. Using the flag method that we use on our boats when we're in our lake, maybe applying that in the workforce as far as how your farm runs, to put a flag at the hoop house that you're going in, that way, if somebody has to come find you and there's no one else that can point where you are, that that's an easy method to find out who went into a hoop house and where they might be located. Just wanted to express that because I thought it was a good idea. It does help with boats to be able to see that orange flag out there. So those are my comments.
Supervisor Green?
That's an interesting idea. Thank you. I'm just trying to do that to a pear grower. We should be flagging pears. I don't know. The, I appreciate very much the collaborative spirit. I can live with the suggested change. Question for staff, though, I did share, because I was reminded by multiple people, 2019, this board passed a resolution trying to give some clarity to enforcement of fire road standards in our commercial cannabis operations. And that same resolution gave direction to bring back standards. Obviously, that was many years ago and different people were filling different roles at that I, I can support this moving forward with the amendments proposed, but I still think we are, in so doing, we're well short of what the goal of that 2019 resolution was, to bring some clarity once and for all for how this is going to be applied, where and when. Maybe this is a positive step forward in bringing forward that master direction. But it was pretty clear in that resolution that we were not to be picking and choosing how we're going to enforce fire road standards for cannabis only without addressing with equal force and vigor what they should be in agricultural operations not involving cannabis. So my immediate question is, is this proposed ordinance in conformance with the direction that the board gave in 2019 as, as it applies to 4290 road standards? That's my first question.
That will take me a moment to pull up the resolution. I don't have it on hand, so. While I'm looking that up, I would also request clarity. I think Sarah, Ms. Bodnar, requested a removal of the maximum square footage of 2,000 square feet. So I just wanted a little clarity on that one. Are we totally removing, oh, thank you, maximum area allowances? Because unlike other parts of the ag structure ordinance, this does not have a percentage of canopy area maximum. So if we remove the 2,000 square foot maximum square footage, I'm just looking for board direction on if anything should replace that.
How does everybody feel about that? I'm fine with that.
I think either way, it spells the same limitations because a maximum of 20 feet and a maximum of 150 feet is basically 3,000 square feet. And if we don't have 3,000 square feet, it's still 3,000 square foot maximum. That's the way that I read it, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with change.
Did you say 3,000?
If it was 20 by 150, it would be 3,000. But whether it's there or not, I really don't see the difference. So not having it there is fine.
Okay. And just after a very quick scan of this resolution, 2019-124, it does make reference to the Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. It does not cite California Fire Code 503.1.1. I don't know, I'm unable to discern if it was the intention of the board to try to find an exemption to that one, but our research through the code shows that that, so far has shown that that doesn't, there is no exemption that exists for agricultural operations. So 503.1.1 will still stand regardless of the exemption for 4290 and 4291, is my understanding. And if the Fire Chiefs would like to correct me, if I'm mistaken, that would be greatly appreciated.
Supervisor Spatier?
So Supervisor Simon, or Vice Chair Simon and myself were part of those discussions. That was never part of our discussion. It was solely 4290 and 4291, hence the resolution that you're reading that does not suggest any other changes to the fire code.
So it does not indicate, then, that this, the, this ordinance would be out of line from the spirit of that resolution?
Then my follow-up question would be, just like we're cleaning up this language, was whatever that code section was referenced during your debate on 4290? Or is that just one of 15 different fire codes that got bandied about and that was an incomplete discussion in 2019 just because we weren't drilling down into the, and so that Chapter 5 you're talking about, is that a structure ordinance? I kind of lost. Where does 4290 end in this clause you're talking about begin? And why, why was that clause not addressed in 2019?
I would request the input from our Fire Chiefs because I'm not familiar with Public Resource Code versus California Fire Code. I'm, I'm not sure where they dovetail, how they work together, so I would defer that question.
All right, Chief Spatier, happy, happy afternoon. Yeah, there's not a clear understanding on the, on 4290 in regards to ag, but the California Fire Code clearly defines that. In 2019, the Fire Chiefs weren't involved that much in cannabis. In 2018, we began our ordinance after the California Fire Code, Chapter 38, came out in draft. So amongst four counties, Yellow County, Mendo, Lake, and Calusa got together and we tried to stamp some stuff out. And I know Bernie and I have had multiple conversations, is in 2019, we weren't really involved with the ordinance. You had brought it by me to look at, gave you some feedback, and then all of a sudden, when it came to the board, we kind of said, oh, we need to really pay attention to this. And, and it took us some time to get on the cannabis task force. And so part of that lapse was a lack of communications amongst the agencies. But in 2019, we were embedded with COVID. So there was a lot of things that we missed during that period of time. And that's kind of when we came to the table, is bringing all of the codes that we follow to kind of educate everyone on, on those, the resource codes and the fire codes as they change, and they, they change very, very rapidly. You know, so I think that it was a miscommunication in 2019 for us not being fully on board and being embedded with the process of that ordinance.
And then if I can ask, and it may be memory serves, I know, three years ago, when that resolution was passed, it looks like the paragraph at the very end was, was an amendment that the board gave direction at that time. And that was to direct staff to bring back and engage with our fire departments about 4290 as it applies to ag generally. I'm guessing that didn't happen for COVID and all that. Is that something we still need to do? I know I'm talking about a resolution versus this.
Yeah, is this something that is for this particular revision? Because we, we are, we have a big time crunch today and we've got to move through these items. So that's, I, I just want some clarity on that.
I, I want some conformity between what we did three years ago, four years ago now, and where we're headed. So I think I got the question answered, that the resolution only applied to 4290. So if we pass this ordinance before us today, it would not direct conflictly, conflict directly at least with the 2019 resolution. But I also want some clarity, if not today, then at some time appropriate, that whatever that last paragraph in the resolution was done, we're going to come back and, and talk about 4290 some more, so.
And that is why we are, and you know, either Paul, Paul Blues or myself, or Paul Duncan are at all the cannabis task force meetings and we're engaged in it. So we are trying to catch and, and identify those shortfalls and loopholes, and that's kind of why we're here today, is that, you know, that part of the California Fire Code is very important to us. And that's, that's why we do come and, and speak and say, hey, we need to have some clarity and some changes here. So we are very well engaged with that with Mireia and Andrew as we move forward. Like I said, Paul, Paul or myself are at every meeting and see us on Zoom or in person. So I think that that, that bridging of communications has been, been established and moving forward. So yeah, I think that those parts and Mireia's been amazing to work with, so I think that we're on the right track.
We really appreciate you being here today. Appreciate all of the participation and make this the best draft we can get to.
It's all good.
And then move it forward. Supervisor Spatier?
Just want to finish off with, the main purpose of the conversation that led to that resolution was accessing the farm. So from the main roads to the main area where you would park your car and then start working. And so this fire code that we're talking about is more surrounding the environment of the farm, not accessing the farm. So we, we had a very specific subject that we were tackling with that resolution, and I think that it's, it still fits and it still works. No conflict.
Yeah, and there was a lot of conversation, as you said, the access to the roads. Some of these things are very rural. Bridges were a challenge for holding the vehicles to get out there. There was a lot of conversation at that time, a lot of moving parts, but do appreciate the collaboration that's happening now and no simple answer to any of these questions. But I think we'll continue working on it.
As the cannabis task force continues to update the cannabis policy, part of that is taking a look at standards for cultivation. We'll just make a note that this is included and is of particular interest in the board so that we can make sure that that is a thorough and deliberate conversation to derive some recommendations to bring back to you.
Okay, so this is direction to bring back the draft again next week, correct?
Or do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do the first reading?
It would be a motion.
Okay.
To have the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption with, I'll redo it again, sorry, I apologize. Motion to have the ordinance as amended be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption with the amendments be, that were covered here in this meeting.
So moved, and the amendments would be to strike the clause on 1C that states in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, and then to switch on to, okay, let's see, to A, 2A2, to make it maximum of 20 feet and maximum length of 150 feet and scratch off the maximum square footage.
And there is also, if I may, believe Ms. Turner also had one proposed amendment to.
That would be in 2A, Section 2A, line 27, changing if all of the following requirements are met to subject to the following.
And that, that is my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
See you next time.
See you next week.
Getting close.
See you next time.
Okay. So do we have Director Deleon? This item is A, approve Amendment 1 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, Inc., MGE, for consulting services related to the Department of an application of the USDA for grant funds and authorize the chair to sign the agreement, and B, authorize the application to USGS for grant funds. Public Works.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you very much for letting us sneak in here. This item was pulled for the typo that you just noted in the subject. Part B, authorize the application, USGS should be USDA. Fortunately, in the recital in the, in the resolution here that I prepared for the amendment, everything is referenced USDA, and it's just in the cover memo that we inadvertently got USGS. So what I'm asking you to do is to consider this item with the modification of the board memo, any reference to USGS needs to be USDA. So in your recommended action, under B, it would be authorize the application to USDA for grant funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
If USGS has money they want to give us, we'll take that, too. Madam Chair, move to approve Amendment 1 to the agreement between the County of Lake and Mountain G Enterprises, Inc., for consulting services related to the development of an application to the USDA for grant funds and authorize the chair to sign the agreement and authorize the application to USDA for grant funds. Let's see if we can do both.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. Our last item is 7.1. Count, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have one more item, 5.23, pulled by Joan Moss, if you want to come on up. Sitting as a Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, approve the memorandum of understanding implementation of the Westside Sacramento Integrated Regional Water Management Plan for the Westside Subregion of the Sacramento River Funding Area and authorize the chair to sign.
Joan Moss, I'm curious as to whether you do need to change your position as to the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District. Do you need to change that identification before you vote on the consent agenda? Because you are the, it says, "sitting as the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District." You didn't do that. It's part of the consent agenda. The second thing I want to know is, I don't know where these are located, and I don't understand their, their long names, and I don't know what this means. I need to read the materials more, but I think this is very important because it concerns water. And just because we have water this year doesn't mean we're going to have water next year. I think we need a public hearing and we need this written out, and then we need it explained. And I need to know whether this is, since we did finally pass the groundwater management plan, how the groundwater management plan is connected to this consent agenda, how it is involved. I, I don't, I need clarification.
Okay.
And if you, if you're all convinced that you understand it, fine, but I, I don't understand, we're all in the same boat, we all drink the same water, our water goes down into this area, and it's all impacted by mercury, the water. So I need to know, I need it clarified. Thank you.
So we are sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District. And, I'm sorry.
You did.
I, I did. It was part of the memo.
I just, I pulled it before you did. So Marina's going to talk to that.
I thought this was on last week.
Yeah, it was. Number two. I pulled it before you voted on this. You haven't voted on it yet, because I told you.
We haven't voted on it yet. We voted on it last week, and we have Deputy Director Delijonis on here, who will explain how it got on the agenda twice.
Hi, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, and in this case, Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District. You are absolutely correct. A member of the public did beat me to it in pulling this item. We were going to pull this item since the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District did take up this item on a consent item for Item 5.23 on May 2nd, which was approved. And I'm more than happy to address Joan. I can circle back with Joan and give her a more update and more detailed description of the IRWMP plan. But just a very quick section on that, the IRWMP plan is a reason.
I'm sorry, if you could just meet with her privately, that'd be great. We have to get through a lot of things today in closed session. So Joan, if you want to go up and meet with Marina, she'd be more than happy to explain this to you, and we're going to have to move on on our agenda.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
But you did vote on it already?
Last week we did. Yep. And you pulled it last week, and we voted on it after we had another brief discussion. So we are going to go to our last open item, and that's 7.1 with our calendars. And I just encourage everyone to move quickly through their calendars so that we can get to our interviews, which we're already behind schedule on. So who would like to start? Go ahead.
I'll be quick. LTA APC tomorrow, meeting about the Potter Valley Project tomorrow. Then on Thursday, I'm going to be taking some time to hang out with our Ag Commissioner for Invasive Species, going to Frick Hall, where there's going to be a celebration. I don't remember the exact thing, but I know it's veteran-related, and they are officially opening that up. Going back to my calendar, on Friday, I'm going to be traveling to, I believe, Humboldt County, where the, you'll see the sign out there, Born to Breathe, for tobacco cessation. They're doing another competition for artwork done by high school kids or our youth in order to try to get the momentum going for dropping the numbers of, the number of people smoking and the impacts that they, for their health. There's a Peace Officer Memorial later on that evening that I don't want to miss here in Lakeport. And I am just going to say I'm done with that, and Happy Mother's Day.
Do you want to go?
Yes. So last night was the first Central Region Town Hall meeting. They picked their officers, picked a date to meet. It'll be the second Monday of the month at the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center. They are also having, Lucerne Alpine Senior Center is having a spaghetti dinner on June 3rd, so if you contact them and get in touch, you can get some tickets. They're also, SURF being, they're also going to be part of the Agreement for Clash Against Trash on May 20th. So I wanted to just announce that. This week, tomorrow, meeting with staff, Potter Valley Project, the PDA course, I'll have that as well. I'll be traveling to RCRC in Butte County for the Board Chair Annual Meeting Thursday. I'll have the Water, Energy and Climate Nexus meeting while I'm there as well. And that'll be Butte, I'll still be there. Friday, we have the RCRC Board Meeting, the Golden State Finance Authority Meeting, and the Golden State Connect Authority Board Meeting. And then I'll be coming back and trying to get back in time for the First Responder Memorial Ceremony. Saturday, I'll be a part of the Sunrise Ceremony at Robinson Rancheria, across where the Bloody Island is. And it'll be at 5:00 AM out there, so if you wanted to come out, that's, that's the time. Monday, CAO Meeting in the morning, and then Lake County Visioning Forum at Robinson Rancheria at 6:00 PM, I think, right? I think that's what we said. And then back here on the 16th for the Board Meeting.
Okay, who's ready down here? Go ahead.
Hey, I'm trying to get into Lake APC, doing a survey with some community group about wildfire threats. Looks like Children's Council. Don't know if I have an agenda on that yet. I'm going to be doing invasive weeds two days. I'm going to double down on star thistle, so Thursday and Friday on that. Mental Health Advisory Board meets Thursday afternoon. I have a meet and greet with our new Economic Development Officer on Friday, and then I do hope to be at the Peace Officers Memorial Friday afternoon, and that's about it.
Lake APC tomorrow. If we get out of here in time, I might stop by the Lower Lake Action Committee Group tonight. Thursday, have the math meeting. Friday with CAO. Saturday, the Jubilee for the Middletown Mustangs Booster Program. Be attending that, obviously, Happy Mother's Day to everybody on the 14th. And then Monday, have meetings with Russ Kramer on the afternoon, and the RRA meeting at 3:00 PM Saturday. So, I mean, Monday.
Monday. Tomorrow, I have agenda review, and then I'm driving to Santa Cruz for the Wildfire Task Force Meeting, which I'll be doing all day Thursday. I'm going to have to miss the Fire Safe Council Meeting. Coming back Friday, probably going to miss our Hazard Tree Staff Meeting, so.
What time is that?
That's at 1:00. It's a standing meeting, so I don't, would you, someone let maybe Terry know? I'm going, I don't think I'm going to make it back for the First Responder Memorial. And then Monday, meeting with our CAO. We have the Drought and Tree Mortality Declaration Discussion and Risk Reduction here. On my way home, I'm going to go to the KBA Mixer in the evening, and then back on Tuesday. So that is our open session for today. We are going to move into closed session. Item 8.1, 2:00 PM, employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, interviews for Child Support Services Director, appointment of Child Support Services Director. Thanks so much to everyone for joining us today.